To call the meeting to order. And so the first thing is to review and approve the agenda. And the only potential suggestion I have is to, we have an appointment to make to the Community Advisory Board for the Community Justice Center. And we also have an appointment to make around a parliamentarian. I kind of wonder if we should put those together, maybe at the end of the meeting unless folks have objections. Is that okay?
Is anyone here for the CAB?
Yeah, is anyone here for the CAB meeting? I sort of am suspecting not, but I could be wrong. Okay, so we'll just move that to the end as well. All right, so on, any other suggestions about the agenda? Okay, so with that, we'll consider the agenda approved. And so we're on to the consent, oh, I'm sorry, general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to make a comment to the council, and particularly if it is not pertaining to anything on our agenda. And if you do have a comment that you would like to make that is about our agenda, then you can make that comment adjacent to that item when we get there. And so as is true with all comments this evening, if you would say your name, where you live, and try to keep your comments to about two minutes or less, that would be great. And also, if you are joining us digitally, just for our, for my sake, if you wouldn't mind changing your name to your first and last name so that we know how to record you properly and calling you properly. All right, I think that is it. Anyone wish to make a comment? Go ahead.
It's hard to read with glasses and a book. And I warned you ahead of time, there's more here than two minutes. Yesterday, I tried to pull up the agenda, and it's pulling up a February 2020 agenda. I had the city clerk verify that it wasn't anything I was doing wrong. There were two entries for a city council meeting on the calendar. You click it, it opens up a packet from 2020. It's a recurring problem. I understand a plow hit a car last night, may have totaled the rear end of the car and left the scene. And since we never did anything about the Green Mountain Transit folks hitting a homeless person in the crosswalk and leaving the scene, I really wonder if we've got some kind of impunity going on here. The mask police, oh, no, masks is coming up. I can do that later. Public records requests, appeal to the head of the agency related to Montpelier's decision to no longer be a public safety answering point. I brought that to your attention, nothing's been done. City manager ignores appeals to the head of the agency. And that cannot be allowed. If it does end up in litigation, I will name each of the city councilors, because you're complicit in it, by not managing your manager or mismanager. The body cams, there's a public records request related to the body cams, because that's an immediate budget item. I specifically asked for the FirstNet proposal and for the Axon proposal. Chiefs playing games with it. I know that there's an Axon proposal, because I've talked to Axon about it, you know, and you just, you let these people get so far out of accountability that you don't even know how to begin to reel it back in. I asked two councilors to try to put an agenda item on related to the Public Safety Authority and related issues. It didn't get added to the agenda, but it is time critical, because you've got a city manager, you've got a rogue police chief assigned himself to run and defeat and around, undermine seven years of work by the Public Safety Authority, and even resort to say, oh, well, I'll do this and this and this, and then CVPSA can be dissolved. I'm like, what the hell is going on here? And why is the city manager saying, "Sounds good to me, let's roll with it"? That's a quote. So I'm quite outraged that y'all are not doing your due diligence on public safety issues like radios, governance, body cams, hit and run, leaving the scene, et cetera, et cetera. I apologize for the tone. I'm a little worked up about it. I hope, I would ask you to have some discussion around these issues and not just pass them off as if they were going in the sinkhole.
Thank you. Do you want to address anything? Or no, if not, that's fine.
I have no information on a plow hitting the street. Where do you get your information? It's the first I've heard of it. A plow hitting a vehicle. Where, when?
Last night.
What's your?
Oh, if you would.
Yeah, what's your source of information?
Somebody who witnessed the damage.
So you got it secondhand? Did you get it secondhand? Did you see it? Or did you get it secondhand?
I have a photo, if you want to see it.
But you didn't see it happen? So you don't actually know if it was reported?
You can try to, you know, impeach, shoot the messenger. You got caught off guard. You don't know that your city hit plow. You're getting, the city's on the hook for paying.
No, my point is that you come in here and makes a statement that you can't back up. It may well have happened. I don't know about.
Call Officer Hohenza.
Stephen, you can let him finish. Don't interrupt.
Secondly, so we will follow up on that. Secondly, we have responded to your request. I gave you everything we had, I told you that.
Which request?
Please don't interrupt.
With regard to the PSAP, I sent you, I said, this is all we have. I even told you I was surprised it was all we had. And I can provide copies to all the council if they don't believe me. I am aware of the public workers' request of the body cams. Chief told me he's working on it. I don't know anything about an agenda item. We're happy to have an agenda item with the CVPSA. I'm sure what you're talking about rogue. We're trying to get the project done that we can get done for the best interest of our city. We've communicated with CVPSA and their chair about how we plan to proceed.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna keep going.
He asked me several questions.
No, actually, I think he asked you one question and you answered it.
And then he just lied to you.
Well, so, thank you, Stephen. All right. So we are, anyone else in the public? Either in person or digitally? All right, Vicki, Vicki Lane, go ahead.
Um, oh, wait a minute. Whoops, what did I just do?
We can hear you if that's helpful.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I think I just sort of minimized you guys. Anyway, I, I wonder if you could, if somebody there could get the Public Works Director on the phone and find out about that. I find it really hard to conceive that it's, that one of our city's snowplows would have hit a car and not reported it. Now, if he hit it and didn't realize it, that's a whole different story. So that's just my comment.
Okay, nothing else?
No, not at this time. I just, the tenor of that, of the whole, it just, it bothers me to hear such accusations so freely put about. Anyway, so that's just my feeling.
Thank you. Anyone else, either in person or with us digitally, wish to make a comment? Okay, all right, so we are going to move on then.
Can somebody that has the power mute me?
I think someone is on it. All right, so we are on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Move the consent agenda.
Okay, motion and a second, further discussion. Okay, all in favor, please say aye. And opposed. Okay, so, and I am delighted to be welcoming our legislative delegation this evening. Thank you for joining us. And I see a number of you are here. So I think we should probably start with letting you all introduce yourselves to us, and then we'd love to have a conversation about the interests of the city at this point. So whoever would like to go first, I'll let you jump in. Go ahead, Anthony, or Senator Plina.
Hi, folks, I'm Anthony Plina. I serve in the Senate. I serve on the Government Operations Committee and the Agriculture Committee. Pleased to be here.
Great, thank you. Senator Cummings.
Hi, I'm Ann Cummings. Familiar with your chamber. One of two former mayors in the legislature right now. I chair finance, and I serve on health and welfare. And we are looking at a very busy year this year.
Yeah, and Senator Perchlik.
Yeah, thank you for having us here today. I'm Andrew Perchlik, in the Senate as well. I'm Vice Chair of Transportation and also on education.
Great, and I don't see either Representative Hooper or Kids Miller at this point, unless I'm wrong.
I haven't seen them.
Okay. So yeah, actually, for, at this point, I want to turn it over to the folks who put together, I guess, our legislative agenda. So Lauren or Connor, would you be up for talking us through this?
Yeah, sure. I can kick it off here and really thank the senators for coming in. It's, I think it's the third time we've done this now, and it's really just great to, you know, sort of have you so receptive to our recommendations. And it really does feel like you have your thumb on the pulse of the city, just coming to these meetings, you know, sitting through and hearing everything we're dealing with. So really, just want to start off appreciating the three of you for coming tonight. You know, I'm sure everybody's had a chance to look at the legislative agenda, and I think maybe it would be helpful if, I know we all have sort of our different points of interest here, maybe we could chime in on some of those. But I serve as the city council liaison, the homelessness task force in town. And as you know, we've seen, I'm not sure if it's an increase, but definitely an increase in need, I think, in the services that the city's provided. And, you know, it feels like we're doing the best we can with sort of a $14 million budget. But as time goes on, and Ken Russell will talk about it when he gives his homelessness task force presentation, it feels like we're increasingly maybe taking on some of the roles that the state traditionally has done there. You know, certainly, we have a social worker that we've embedded into the police department along with Barry. We recently appropriated funds for a second peer outreach person. We've expanded the hours of the transit center to make sure people can be warm, you know, before they're able to go into the shelters. We've put money for transportation and $7,500 for hotel vouchers as well. So we're doing the best we can, but sometimes it still feels like we're underwater on some of these issues. We've got the ARPA fund set aside for $425 to explore maybe, you know, 24/7 restrooms, as well as sort of a hub where people can go get out of the cold and stay warm. So I think there is like, you know, if we, when we did our strategic planning, there is a willingness to continue doing this, but I think we need more help. The big thing that comes to mind, and it's on the agenda, is, you know, the public restroom, it's been a discussion for a while. We did meet with the BGS Commissioner, and I think there is a feeling that, you know, in addition to the community, 24/7 restrooms really aren't necessary for the dignity of folks just to be able to take a shower, maybe a laundry unit in there too, if there was a component of that. But we'd love to see something like that in the capital bill, maybe to share some of this expense. You know, the state does maintain restrooms off the highway, right? And we have thousands of visitors every year to the State House and looking at some of the state attractions in Montpelier. So that's one thing we'd really love to partner on. So just wanted to put that on your radar and see if there was, I don't know if there's any reactions to that, or maybe we should move on to another issue there? We can keep going. Would Lauren like to talk about PFAS a bit, maybe? That's another one hot off the presses.
Sure, yes. And just echo the gratitude for having you here. It's really great to just keep in touch and be able to hear from you all what you're, what you're hearing, and how we can partner on these priorities. So a couple that are kind of in my wheelhouse, so, you know, as you know, we've been really wrestling as the only community remaining in Vermont who's taking the PFAS contaminated leachate. So, you know, we're viewing it as high priority, both to continue with upstream solutions like you all have of banning PFAS from additional products, so we're not importing them into the state, and continuing to look at solutions to protect our, our water and our environment and our people from these chemicals. You know, even looking at things like possible, you know, in the infrastructure bill, for example, there was funding for PFAS contamination in wastewater treatment facilities, so maybe there's some opportunity there that we could explore about, you know, better filtration at our own facility here in town. So some of that, just want to kind of keep an eye on what opportunities you all might see in the legislature from the state funding that will come in, either ARPA or the infrastructure bill. Another one kind of up my wheelhouse, you know, we put, we've been, of course, advocating for strong action on climate change mitigation and resilience, you know, working towards our city's net zero target that we set by 2030 for city operations, and then 2050 for the city overall. And so, you know, we know that'll be a big topic of conversation, so, you know, looking for opportunities where the city might be able to partner and benefit from, you know, the things like the My Ride pilot, you know, if there's ways that I think the city could be a leader in benefiting from the climate investments that I know are going to be, you know, on you all's to-do list this year. It'd be great to just keep in touch on, you know, where you see opportunities for the city and that. Thanks.
Lauren, Lauren?
Yeah.
Yes. I don't want to, I don't want to take us off on a tangent or anything, but you mentioned that Montpelier is the last place to take the PFAS contaminants. Excuse, tell me, how'd that come about? I mean, why is that? Why are we the lucky ones in that sense?
Do you want to answer that?
I can take a stab.
Yeah, go for it.
I mean, so historically, there've been, you know, we had learned, you know, maybe like five communities that have taken leachate, and for, it sounds like a variety of reasons, every other facility in Vermont has stopped taking it. So at this point, the Coventry landfill, and we get some from the closed Moore Town landfill as well, but most other, they're either shipping it to New Hampshire, New York, or Montpelier now. And so we've been working with the state, trying to look at how Casella can, there's a permit process underway where they're looking at pre-treatment of the leachate before it would go to any facility. And so we're trying to kind of ensure that stays on track so that no community, including Montpelier, in the future, once that gets up and running, is taking the PFAS contaminated leachate and just essentially dumping it into the river. But that's going to take, you know, a year and a half or so, we were told, to get that up, the pre-treatment up and running.
Could Montpelier theoretically say we're not taking it anymore?
We theoretically could, yes. And we've been wrestling with that.
Yeah, and there's, so there's an A&R program that allows some oversight of this pre-treatment, and as far, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lauren, but my understanding is that A&R's involvement is, that at least, is tied to it going anywhere in Vermont. So in order to sort of have ourselves and A&R continue to be at the table there, that's something that we were interested in, but, but that could change. And we've sort of set a deadline for ourselves to, to check in to see like, are they making progress? And is, you know, is this really happening, or are people dragging their feet, et cetera? Yeah, please.
Yeah, if I may, Senator, you know, the fact is whether Montpelier takes it or not, the leachate is still being generated because of trash that we all generate, and PFAS is in many, many substances. So Vermont still has a huge issue with this. It's got to be disposed of somewhere. And, and so I think the urging here is to provide the funding and the leadership to make sure that the proper, that A&R stays on top of this, and that there's adequate resources to make sure that the state-of-the-art treatment can be developed so that we can all go forward. And obviously, that we also ban this topic, this substance in any new products coming in. So I think, you know, it's, we're taking it because someone has to, and we are being compensated for it, but that doesn't mean, you know, we're the only game in town. Someone's got to deal with this.
Right, thank you.
Great. I'm just, yeah, go ahead, Connor.
Keep picking a few issues here. I mean, a big one for us, obviously, as you know, is state employees returning to work. And I think how much, how much influence the legislature has over a decision like that, you might not be, you might not be pulling the trigger on that, but anything you can do to influence it. You know, we still see the tumbleweeds rolling around town sometimes, and, you know, between the lost revenue of parking and just the fact that people aren't buying sandwiches at lunchtime, has such a real and immediate effect on the economy in town that we're, we're still, still pulling back from, and probably will continue to be for a while. As you, Lauren mentioned it, but I think it's important to give feedback when a state initiative's going really well, too. And My Ride, I believe, has been a success in our community. Thanks, Senator Perchlik, for your leadership in transportation on that. Having sort of this city-run Uber, you hear the different stories about people, you know, whether it be disabilities or seniors whose world has been expanded by having this on-demand transit system. And we would really like to see that expanded even. I know AOT is looking to roll this out in other communities, but we don't really feel like we're at the point where we've done it right yet. So put more resources, have more drivers, more shifts, in expanding the service area, I think would make a big difference in a lot of people's lives there. And we're certainly willing to commit, I think we're putting 70K towards GMT in our budget again this year, so we're happy to do that.
Great, so, you know, I want to give the opportunity to our senators to either, you know, tell us about what, what you think about these topics that we've just raised, or are there other big issues that we have not raised that you think are going to be moving this legislative session that we should be paying attention to? So, yeah, whenever you're, whenever you're ready. Senator Cummings, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll start. I guess I, I'd like to start out by commending Montpelier for really being a socially responsible and caring community, you know, that you're trying to, to do everything possible with the homeless. The bathroom was news to me, and I think that's great. It is difficult with young kids, and we could use a public restroom. I, if the governor puts together the capital budget, we can talk to the, the committee and see if we can get some money in there. Right now, we have a lot of one-time money. The problem is, our base revenues at this point are not projected to increase any faster than our expenses. And I doubt that that's novel. My experience with the city of Montpelier says it is always tight. And so we're trying to do wise investments, but not make a commitment for ongoing, i.e. staffing kinds of things, because if we do that in the future, we are, we're going to have to take it from another, another, another program. One I'm particularly concerned about, we have two programs that, because of our revenue and expense thing, have suffered for years, and the pandemic has brought out even greater need, is our mental health system and our long-term care, visiting nurse, visiting nurse, home health. We need to look at our Medicaid rates, that we reimburse them with, because this, the pandemic has really brought that out. We don't control when workers are coming back. I was polled again this week about whether or not, you know, how I feel about the legislature coming back. We're all watching those numbers. I think up until Omicron, in the last couple weeks, I was certain we were going back, probably I'm not so certain now, and I think state employees are in the same predicament. We're trying to get everything back to normal as quickly as possible, and at the same time, protect the health of our employees and the, and the people of Vermont. And I think you know how controversial masking is, never mind vaccine mandates or mandated testing. So we're working our way through that. We've got a couple, this is the second year of a biennium, and I have never seen so many heavy issues on our plate in a second year. We have the school waiting study that's going to impact, yes, no, and maybe, you know, different schools differently. We have the pension issue and the pension expenses, not payment for what we didn't put in in the past, but present payment expenses are in the, the Ed Fund. And while this year we have a significant surplus because of the federal stimulus and the fact that people went out and bought a lot of stuff, but the cost last year, just for the undervaluation on the return in investment, went from $6 million to $36 million. And if teachers' healthcare goes in, which the Senate has done, the House has still not made a final decision, that's another $6, $8 million. Any increased payment from the state to the pension fund is, of the teachers' pension fund, not state employees, is going to be footed by the property tax. And I think city people have always been very aware of the burden of the property tax. We're going to be looking at that. We've got a couple proposals of going to an income tax, and we're going to be looking at that, I assume this year. We're going to try. But again, it's the second year, and it's just the time we're going to have, but they're all issues we're going to have to deal with. We're putting as much money as we possibly can into affordable housing. We've got all kinds of federal money, but it takes time to permit and build housing. And that, you know, we're, we're sitting here trying to make do in the middle while we're trying to build our way out. And hopefully, we can, the thing that we're missing, or we will be missing, is a great deal of ongoing state revenue to fund the services necessary for a lot of people to work their way out of homelessness. And that, to me, is, is critical. I think we know that many people have mental health and have addiction and, you know, issues, and if we're going to truly change the situation, we need to find the services that they need to help them not just get into temporary housing, but to get into permanent housing and lead, you know, a comfortable and productive life. So I think that's it. It's fairly overwhelming this year, the things that we've got to work on.
Yeah, thank you, Senator.
Well, I would, I would just, I could easily just ditto everything, and, and just said, she laid out pretty well the challenges that we face. I would just mention two other things that should be on her list as well, but it's, one, it's going to take a lot of our energy, whether or not it changes anything or not, but it's going to affect all of us, is the debate over reapportionment, redistributing. As you know, the, the, the board of, reapportionment board came back calling for single-member districts for both the House and the Senate. So that'll be, that'll be a time suck, quite honestly, in the legislature, because there'll be a lot of internal debate about that, particularly in the House, maybe less so in the Senate. We'll see how that goes. But I think that, that's going to, something that's going to take a bunch of our time, whether we like it or not. We're all Uh, we're also gonna have to, early in the session, decide how we're gonna deal with COVID from the statewide point of view again. You know, in terms of town meeting day, town meeting um, exemptions from, to have, doing in, in, in uh, in-person meetings and whatnot. Those things that we did last year, we'll have to decide if we're gonna do them again this year. That will happen pretty quick in terms of the beginning of the session. I think that, you know, one thing I want to mention is, we've talked in the past with you folks about the importance of supporting local initiatives. Um, I'm curious, this, I don't want to go off on a tangent either, but I'm curious where your take is on the non-ci- non-citizen voting issue at this point. But what I wanted to say was that, you know, we, we continue to try to find ways to give more power to local communities from the Government Operations Committee point of view. You know, we, the one time when we actually did it was the, we've been giving it, the, may give you the option of doing mask mandates or not, you know, so the one time we decided to give you local controls, it was a tricky issue that all of us know is very controversial. So it's just kind of interesting that we decided to use, put that one off on you folks as, because as opposed to doing a statewide mandate for masks. And I appreciate the fact that Montpelier's been doing itself. Between the pensions and the reapportionment and the potential of talking about education funding as well. Um, it's an ongoing discussion around moving to, away from property towards income. That will, I don't think we'll resolve that this year, but I think we'll get the conversation going again.
John, do you want to speak at all to the um, non-citizen voting? If not, that's fine.
Yeah, I know it's an issue we've already kind of dealt with, right? It's in the courts, I don't want to, I don't want to distract us from talking about things that we need to really talk about, but I'm just curious.
Fair enough. Let's, let's keep going for now, but um, if you want to weigh in on that later, that's fine. Um, Senator Perchlik, anything you want to add?
Yeah, I was gonna bring up the waiting study as, as something that was not on your, on your agenda. I can see why it wouldn't be on your priority list, but it's definitely some, a big thing that's gonna come up, and I know it's not the school board, but it, the two different recommendations coming out of the task force. If you looked at the charts in the back, either, either way, either option would create a tax increase for the property owners of Montpelier. So it's something to just be aware of. It would be phased in over five years, that was the recommendation. Um, but it's sure, it's gonna impact all the citizens of the city. So it's something to at least have on your radar and be involved with as much as you can and, and discussions with the school board, I think would be good. Uh, but I support the, when I looked through your agenda, there's nothing on there that I had questions about or wondered what your thinking was or anything. I think it's great and I commend you for doing the work. I also looked at your strategic plan. I thought that was well done and was glad to see the city government doing that kind of planning. I thought that was commendable and happy to help where I can on the, on the bathrooms with the capital budget and working with BGS. Hopefully, we could, you know, find a location that they could support. And, and this, if it's gonna happen, this is probably the year to find some extra money to, to make it happen. So probably working with Representative Hooper would be good to try to find a way to, to make that work. And just one other thing I'll just mention, that I'd like to see the city do is my, I have a son that goes to college in Nissica, New York. And I have a daughter that goes to college in New York City. And both of those cities passed bans on interconnecting natural gas. Uh, but for, you know, for Montpelier would be propane, but they, if you build a new building in, in either of those cities, uh, you can't do gas stoves or hot water heaters. And I think that it would be interesting if um, Montpelier was to look at that and how the state could be supportive. Cause I know there's gonna be impact on low-income folks possibly, and it wouldn't be existing, it's only for new stuff. So it would be something that I'd be interested in seeing how the state could help a pilot, sort of the way we did with the on-demand transit, which I agree with Connor's comments that it's not perfect yet. And if we could get some more money for that before we start rolling it out in other places, I, I, I'm gonna work for that as well. But something else, just to, I'll have to put the task back on you when you guys are asking us to help, but that would be my uh, comment.
Senator Perchlik, I would love to connect with you about um, that last point. Um, and particularly with the Energy Committee. Um, so anyway, let's be in touch about that. Great. Um, any other thoughts? Yeah, go ahead.
Can I just follow up briefly to Senator Cummings? You know, we were talking about the state employees and we, I, I, certainly the city government is not suggesting that we put anyone in harm's way and, and Omicron is coming.
I'm sorry, no, I'm gonna ask him to turn you up.
Okay, apparently. So we don't want to obviously put state employees at risk and we, we have our own city employees. I think the concern here is um, prior to us hearing about Omicron, we were getting word that um, the state was looking at permanent changes where there would be less employees in Montpelier and other downtowns for that matter. That uh, there would be more remote work, that, that they would be reducing their footprint. So obviously, at, at types of high emergency, we're not suggesting that we
Right, okay.
Do anything, but I think in, in terms of longer-term structural, I think um, you know, for lots of reasons, it's great to have our employees where, where people can find and get to them.
Any other thoughts or comments? No, okay. Uh, Lauren, yeah, go ahead.
Just, just one thought on the um, idea that Senator Perchlik brought forward. Definitely also look forward to exploring it with you. I know there have been some conversations um, with V H C B and others about the affordable housing investments that we're making and are we building those and are there kind of co-investments we could make that are ensuring that we're not building things now that are then gonna need to be retrofitted to meet our own state climate commitments in a few years? So, you know, can we get those so they're efficient and affordable and, you know, healthier? Like we know that, you know, good weatherization and good clean heating sources and stuff can do. So I, I know that conversation is happening some, but it would be great if you could kind of keep in ears out for that as well and look for opportunities to make those investments really good for both the people who'd be living in them and, you know, meeting our state obligations on clean energy.
Any other uh, comments from our senators? Okay, all right. Well, thank you so much for joining us again. Um, we really appreciate uh, your time and willingness to hear us and uh, gosh, God, I hope you have an excellent upcoming session. Hope it all goes well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks so much.
Contact us anytime.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Be well.
Yes, you also. Okay.
I, I, I hope the senators uh, would see that we can be a resource for you when you see bills coming up. I hope we have the exchange in both directions. Thank you, thank you very much.
Fair enough. Uh, all right. Uh, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, quickly, before we go into the next item, I just want to report that at three forty-five AM, a grader did hit a car. It was promptly reported to the police department. Owner of the car was found. Insurance information was exchanged and no police report was necessary.
Thank you. Uh, all right. So, okay, we are, we were, uh, for now skipping the appointment to the um, Community Advisory Board. And um, all right, so we're on to discussing an amendment or some amendments to our mask mandate. Uh, and for this, I know some of it is coming from staff. Do you want to explain it? I mean, we, I can jump into, go ahead.
So um, I, when we did the mask mandate uh, at the last meeting, we actually adopted two things. One was the policy for city employees and the other was the general mask mandate, and both important. And I want to be clear, this isn't, our, our proposed suggestion here isn't necessarily just for city employees. I think we, we talked about, you know, the, and we may want to find the, the right language even tonight. But the idea that, you know, someone's alone or whatever, it, it, if you, if you look at our mandate at the most strict reading of it, a, a person that owns a business could have an office in the back of the building or upstairs and be sitting alone in their office, not with the public, not with other employees. And technically would still be mandated to wear that. And in, in the policy we adopted for city employees was that if you're alone and working in your office or if you're isolated, you don't have to wear your mask. Obviously, when you're interacting with the public, you do, or if you're with other employees within a certain distance. And we took the mandate, the, the citywide mandate just said must wear indoors all times. And I don't think that was people's intent necessarily. And so we're just suggesting that we tweak that language somehow. We took a stab, uh, Cameron took a look at other mandates in the state and just tried to use the language they were using. Um, but we're, we don't have any pride or authorship there. If uh, if there's something else that people want to use, that's fine. Uh, but we do feel for, for lots of people that would be an appropriate remedy to, to change.
And uh, if I can also call it out, one of the other things that has at least been suggested is the possibility of adding some kind of enforcement, and you all are not necessarily recommending that at this point.
No, uh, we, we have um, you know, the, the good and the bad of this, this legislation is that we have to look at this again in forty-five days to redo it and then at thirty-day increments after that. So we'll have, I, I think our recommendation is to let the first forty-five days run and evaluate it at that time and see how it's going, decide what we want to do. We do have the section that people will be noticed and we have sent out notices to some businesses. Confirmed, non-compliant and asking them to step it up. So we'll see how that goes.
Um, questions? And then, so we'll do questions and we'll hear from the public and then we'll go back to our discussion, but questions at this point, yes?
I think I, I agree with the approach to maybe wait in the forty-five days to, you know, uh, come out with uh, different penalties. But uh, could you give us an idea of how many complaints we've received?
I don't have an exact number, but they've mostly been concentrated around a couple of businesses. Some much smaller amount, some others.
Thanks.
Any other questions at this point? Okay, uh, all right. So I do want to go to the public first and we'll start with anybody in person.
Steve Whitaker. I, I wonder if folks, councilors are even aware that, of the tactics of like fear and intimidation. We're gonna send you certified letter and we're gonna threaten you as if you're supposed to be a business owner, is supposed to be a deputized police. It, the business owners are required to wear masks and their employees. They're not required to enforce it upon their customers. They can put the mask on the door, that's what the, the letter says, but, I mean, the sign on the door. And let people know, but to, you see, you know, suggest that teenage, you know, first job sixteen-year-old employees of Shaw's are supposed to chase adults around the room and insist they put on a mask is absurd, you know? And certified letters, you know, that are, are bluff, they're really a bluff. This, this, business owners have no obligation to cite or reprimand or kick people out of their business for not wearing a mask. They could point to the sign, they could say that this is a city ordinance, but that's it. So for us to be wasting money on certified letters, you know, and, and creating fear and intimidation, insinuation, coercion, is just out, out of hand. I, I warned you about it last time and it's, it's more mismanagement, you know, by the city.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Greetings. Uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I'm a little short. Uh, my name is Carrie Kelly. Uh, I'm one of your homeless population, currently living over there in the shelter. I just wanted to make you guys aware of a couple of things that are of issue at this point. Um, another way right now is um, denying services of any kind uh, to me and to others that are not issuing them a COVID vaccination card, uh, proof, full vaccination, which I did not know was uh, legal and as per listed here actually by the CDC. It says, do not require a negative COVID nineteen viral test or proof of vaccination for entry to any homeless services site of any kind, unless it's posted somewhere. Do you have such a local or state uh, ordinance or anything like that? That I should be denied repeated services of food, clothing, or telephone?
The only city-related city regulation is the requirement that masks be worn indoors in public places.
Okay, and then threat of law enforcement being called on me if I want to use a phone to get housing?
There's nothing about that.
Nothing that we have. Again, I don't know if the state does, the state health department, I've not heard of anything.
Okay, I just wanted to make you aware of that. And then just a couple of issues with the current shelter. Are you aware that women are being housed with men and that I am forced to sleep next to men? I've been asked to undress in front of men, that I've had comments about my vagina by men. I've been threatened to be assaulted by men for spraying Lysol because I am at high risk and disabled. I have a respiratory issue. I can prove it through my disability as well. And when I sprayed Lysol, I'm like being physically threatened for a week now. People are coughing continually all night long. Um, there's drug use in the facility. Um, I've even had to go to the point where I literally just had like a little memo recorder. I can play at some point how physical it almost did get, where I was almost actually hit by a man because I sprayed Lysol in, on my bunk to protect myself. I don't need to die of COVID. Um, I had a shoe thrown at me this morning for spraying Lysol after the entire room was coughing. I've had my inhaler stolen by an employee over at the shelter as well. While I was sleeping, he opened my bag and then mocked me and said, if I have things to say about people that are sex offenders, that I deserve to have my lifesaving medication taken from me. And that my attitude is uh, something that deserves possibly a penalty of death, because without that inhaler, I can die. I'm also still having bad respiratory symptoms. I'm sorry, I don't mean to bring anyone down. And also there's an issue with the ventilation in there as well. I don't know if it's just an education issue, but the filter is not working, the smell in there is ungodly. Had the filter been, been working, and I've also worked in healthcare for thirty-plus years, I kind of know how filter works. There would be no smell in that room. There is also no open ventilation, they have sealed all the windows now. That is also an issue. I'm concerned because the same people that are sleeping in that room are all sharing needles and drugs out in the public, going into your restrooms, sharing your shopping facilities with you, touching the same items that you are. They're not washing, they're not caring for themselves. Uh, they're going to your bus station. We also have an issue with bathing, there's not enough facilities there to bathe, there is no shower. But if there are too many people there, sometimes you have to be in there to bathe when you are outside. It takes a little longer than five minutes to wash up. I may work a little harder at cleanliness than others, but it is not an excuse. And also our beddings are not being washed. I wash my own. We were treated poorly at the laundromat, told that people hate the homeless and don't want to be near us in the laundromat. So it may be deterring some of the people I'm staying with that are in crisis from drug abuse and other issues. From washing and caring for themselves, but also another way is denying our entry into their facility, which would be the only shower that we have at this point in time. So being that Omicron has emerged, I do not want to see the entire community sick. I mean, we are out every day. We are continually out from eight AM to eight PM. From eight to ten, we have nowhere to go. Um, we wander around. At some point, somebody will die of exposure. We also have a lack of warming stations from five thirty to eight PM. I am, for some reason, trespassed from the bus station, the police will pull me out there, I can't even stand in there to stay warm. And that is the only other option that we have. I'm not allowed to get on a bus. This has been illegal. I've been going through this since, what, June? Had a lawyer, but they continually take me off. Whether I literally have to take my tablet out and record them for my safety so I don't get injured. But I should have someplace warm to go. I was illegally locked out, deadbolted out of my hotel room at the Pierre and Berry. The only reason why I'm alive is because my friend happened to be there. I had a BLM sign on my door, which was not favorable to police, because I find it insane that anyone is killing people because of the color of their skin or anything else. And if I'm somewhat of an activist, that is my prerogative and I don't deserve to die of exposure. This is now time three where the police have trespassed me in such a way that I've lost my housing. The first time when they trespassed me from the transportation The first time when they trespassed me from the transportation, I was staying at the Good Sam, which made me lose my housing. And I lived on your streets for over a month when they would not let me use a phone, make any calls or even find a social worker who found me by accident and got me housing. So here I am, just to let you know, and being denied entry into the condo lodge, which has hundreds of rooms, along with the other people I'm being housed with. So I just wanted to ask you if you could look and see why none of us can fit into a hundred-plus-room motel. The same amount of people that have always been here, were here before. And I would have frozen in Barry had my friend not brought me to a rest stop to keep warm. And I cannot stay with my friend because she has public housing and she will lose her housing. So I'm in this limbo. So if anyone could help, and I'm not the only high-risk person in the shelter. I'm not going to give names. We don't all love each other and it's hard to do it when you have that many people in a room. And we all are desperate to have some control over our lives and we will fight. And people do get violent. Some are more violent than others. I'm not, but I do not want to be injured. But I don't want to see other people in crisis and I certainly do not want anybody else to freeze outside. And the only option I see at this point, to be honest, and this big messy stack of papers I carry around, is that we should just be housed separately so we can remove ourselves from this level of crisis, all of us independently. And let us return back to our normal state of sanity. Let us be safe. Let us be warm. Let us get better. Let us be better. And then we can be a better part of your community. And also I'd like you all to be safe from Omicron. I'm just talking about asthma.
It's okay.
So anyway, I just, my full long statement.
That's okay. So I have a few thoughts. So thank you.
Shall I accept?
Sure, yes. You can go ahead and say, thank you. So, uh, so, so one thing, um, so right now, um, we are, uh, taking comments about our mask mandate. But I, but your comment is, I, I let you, you know, ca, ca, carry on, even though it was not about the mask mandate, because, um, I think you missed the general business and appearances, which is at the beginning. And so that's fine. So, um, it's okay. So anyway, so I figured that that would be all right to let you, you know, um, you know, continue on. And then also I just want to point out, we are going to be talking more about, um, homelessness, uh, actually at our, at the next, the very next item. So anyway, I, I will take your comments also as pertinent to, to that topic as well. Is that okay? Okay, great. Thank you. But I do want to return to talking specifically about, um, the mask mandate. Um, and for that, anyone else in person about the mask mandate particularly? Okay. Um, all right. But I do see your hand, Vicky Lane. Go ahead.
Um, I'm not, I just didn't, I, it's not about the mask mandate. I just, it's to let you know, um, I can't hear especially Bill.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you. Okay, that's fine. No worries. Um, any other comments from folks online about this? Okay. All right. So back to the council. What are your thoughts on a potential amendment? Go ahead, Jack.
I think this is a good idea. I think that, uh, one of, as I reviewed this, you know, one of the thoughts I have is that alone in a public building might be interpreted to simply mean you're the only person in the building. Whereas I think we also want to let people know that if, if you're in a public building, but like you're in your own office, that alone, in your own office, that should also be, uh, covered by this exemption.
Do you have any thoughts as to how we can make that clearer? If not, that's okay.
I started writing something and I just looked on my computer and it's not there. But something like any person who is in alone in a public building or alone in a room in a public building.
Okay. Alone in a public building or alone in a room in a, in a public building. Okay. Other thoughts from council? Jay and then Donna?
Sorry, just real quick, Jack. I had the exact same thought when I, when I read that. And what I don't want to do is get too in the weeds of how we're defining alone. You know, like, it, you know, if we look at the science and say like, what, what's an appropriate amount of space? Is it in a room? Is it in, uh, you know? It's harder to define a space because I could think about like, what would be alone in the town clerk's office versus like the example Bill gave is like, what's, you know, a, uh, back room or upstairs room in a local business? I think like having appropriate separation from the public makes sense. So while it is somewhat vague, I'm okay with the language as, uh, as amended. So that there's appropriate inter, you know, reasonable interpretation because I worry about getting, you know, too, trying to define it all because it's really not, it, it's inconsistent spaces that we're trying to define. So anyways, that's just my two cents.
Thank you. Yeah. Donna?
Well, my concern comes from hearing, uh, the latest on VPR driving over to council meeting was that our masks are not going to be good enough for this current variants. And that even with the double mask and one being surgical is chancy. They're actually promoting a different kind of mask. So if I'm alone in a room and my mask is off, but you come in a little bit later, I can put it on, but that's not going to get rid of what's already in that room. So I, I can accept the language, but I think we may find we need further tweaking eventually.
Any other thoughts? So is there a motion?
If everyone is satisfied with the language, the way it is and just, I, I'm not going to make that, make a motion to amend it. I, I don't know how other people feel.
About the, I'm, I'm happy with both the, the original amendment and, and your addition to that amendment. I think it does make it clearer.
I move to amend it as I, as I stated earlier, I think the clerk was probably taking it down.
You've got it, okay?
Uh, no. I thought it was all being discussed.
Jack, I mean, I heard it pretty, pretty simple though.
I have, assuming I'm legible here. A person who is alone in a public building or alone in a room in a public building is not required to wear a facial covering as long as they remain alone.
Okay.
One second.
Yep. Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And opposed. Okay. And I do just want to recognize that, um, we have Representative Mary Hooper here with us. Um, and just want to, uh, uh, come back to, uh, talking about legislative stuff really quickly. If you want to, um, Representative Hooper, if you, uh, we, we got to hear from folks as to what they thought the big issues were for this upcoming legislative session. And would you like to, to add anything or, um, because I know you probably could see our legislative agenda and, and what, what we prioritize. We put the, the highest priorities at the end. But if, if you would like to, uh, add anything, uh, you are certainly welcome to.
Well, thank you. And you're very kind to let me in at this moment. I, I, I deeply apologize for missing the earlier session and I'll watch what, what you all talked about. I, I know what your agenda is and we are largely in agreement. I'm really looking forward to dealing with issues and really making progress around issues having to do with housing, workforce development, childcare, climate. Uh, you know, I, the, these are huge and big and important. And I think we have, um, some really interesting opportunities. So I'm, I'm, I'm glad that we're in partnership on this and I look forward to working with you all to help advance this.
Great. Any other, uh, questions or thoughts particularly for Representative Hooper? Okay.
Just say thanks for staying in touch with us. You always do.
Yeah.
We, we really appreciate that.
Yeah. And, and, and I, I'm going to listen for a bit. The, you know, the discussion about the mask mandate and certainly the homelessness issues around housing are, are huge for our community and our state. And I, I, I look forward to really working with you all to, to make progress. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Super. All right. So, so we voted on the mask mandate, right? Okay. Just recapping. Go ahead, Jack.
I think what we did so far is vote on my proposal to amend.
Okay. So not, okay.
I moved that we amend the policy as, uh, proposed by the manager as amended.
Okay. Uh, motion and a second further discussion. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed. All right. Okay. So now we are, uh, up to, uh, having a, a discussion, um, about homelessness. And we, so, um, we had asked the homelessness task force to, uh, come to the council with sort of a report and sort of where we were at and what might, uh, the future look like? Where, where are we going? And also give us any, uh, just relevant updates, particularly, uh, you know, as homelessness has been in the news recently. Um, and so I do see, um, I, Ken Russell here with us. And so I'm going to turn things over to you.
Thank you and good evening. I'm glad to be here. Rick DeAngelis was going to beam in from the transit center, which is going to be a very exciting bit of, of, of energy. But, um, unfortunately there was no wifi. So, but anyway, he sends his regards. But, um, as most of you know, we did open the transit center, um, on Monday evening. And boy, what a beautiful facility it is. And what a lot of goodwill went into this project. And there's just a lot of thanks to be given, gratitude for, for this project. Cameron Niedermeier worked really hard to push, bring the ball forward. And so thank you for that, that great work. GMT was very responsive. There's a lot of goodwill amongst, uh, every staff member I've talked to there. It's very positive about it. They're like, it's really nice to have some life in the building. Definitely underscored the, the mission of, of taking care of folks. And so that's just really nice. And what we plan to do is take good care of it while we're there. Folks in the community have asked me about, well, you know, what if, you know, what if the people trash the place or this or that? Well, it's well-staffed, um, although sometimes staffing is a challenge, but we have the bases covered seven days a week. And we're very pleased for it. We're bringing warming food and warming coffee, bringing it over every day. And, and the hope is that it's, it'll be, continue to be a gathering place. A lot of the congregations have expressed interest in, in being a presence there. Nice fantastic response from the community. So, uh, want to thank, thank council for its support of, of that and other efforts. Thank, um, staff. Thank the staff, um, who are staffing these things from both Good Samaritan Haven and Another Way. Thank, thanks to GMT. And thanks to the community members, um, for, for both their support and those impatient to always have more get done. We're all in that boat. It's, it's a frustrating situation. I know you all had discussed, um, some of the deaths that had been reported on. It's a population under siege. It's a population that, um, is, is really challenged and, and, and a situation that's frustrating for, for a lot of folks. So that, that's, um, you know, one of the things we've accomplished. The other thing is the motel, um, room. And Rick DeAngelis just reported to me earlier, they've been using that program. Been able to get some people out of the cold who would otherwise be there. And that's been fantastic. The shelter program, um, is continuing. And, uh, you know, yeah, as the, the woman mentioned earlier, there are some challenges in there. And I, I know that it's, it's the same sort of, there are challenges in, in all of this work. And so there's, there's so much humanity in all of this and so many people turning to, to try to make a difference. The transportation money is, we're hoping that that can be leveraged with other money coming from the state that Good Sam is going after. I know Capstone, Capstone is also working with GMT to, um, and to, to both extend my, my ride and after-hours service for GMT. Like a lot of these things, this, this, these things will take more time. We really do need a taxi service in this town. So I've heard it's like five thousand dollar insurance policy to, to do for livery work. So let me just double check my notes here. Um, the peer outreach expansion, that's been just a continuation of really great work. Dawn and Amelia are working really hard, um, and are quite busy. We had, at Another Way, we have, um, our own folks out there as well. And there are a lot of really good-hearted volunteers out there helping per human to human. Let's see. And then, okay. So the, the consultant money, um, there was twenty-five thousand dollars allocated and the ten thousand dollars, we did, we decided to, to align with a proposal that Will Everly had been pushing and continuum of care. And he's brought in some academics, um, to study some of the root causes, causes of homelessness in the region, to involve homeless themselves in gathering information on what's happening. Second is one that it's ended up, you know, in the task force, been a little bit of the bucket where all the unsolved problems come to, to, to dwell. And there's been a little bit of tension between, should we just build more, a couple more Gerton parks? And I know that could cause some people to shudder. Um, and I, I can appreciate that and I can appreciate there's been some angst around the conditions there. From my perspective, it's, it's, it's just having that situation at the front of town helps remind us all that there's work to be done. You know, I, I kind of threw out this idea, well, there might not be money for a recreation area there, but how about a social justice park? Or how about, you know, you know, mobility or leading the way and tackling its hardest problems right up front? But anyway, that, that's an idea. But there, but there's, so there's some tension in, around this, um, funding money between, let's find something to do right now and let's versus, let's do like a planning study. So we're posi, we're well-positioned to spend greater amounts of money, such as the ARPA money you all have identified. And, you know, and I think that, that tension between slow versus fast is one we're, we're trying to optimize all the time. Like, how do we operationalize what, what we implement? And, you know, we have operational capacity issues with the organizations that are currently involved. It takes time to ramp up greater capacity. So, um, but again, there are a lot of good people turning out, a lot of people questioning approaches. It's like, try this, try this. And we will really welcome the collective wisdom here and your, your fantastic support of these efforts as well as acknowledgement of the gaps and of the underlying human suffering. So that's, that's my, I'm, you know, that's it.
I want to start with council. Any council thoughts or questions? Yeah. Go ahead, Connor.
Jennifer and I, uh, serve on the homelessness task force, uh, for the council. And, uh, just really impressed with the group of people who come together there. And, uh, you know, everybody like, you know, taking the time to really do right by folks who are struggling. And, you know, we heard some stories tonight. I just came from the transit center and, uh, you know, hats off to Rick. He was staffing it himself. It's, you know, there's an executive director who, you know, really gets on the front lines. And, uh, there were about six folks there who, you wonder like, if it wasn't open, where, where would they be otherwise? And, uh, i- i- it's a tremendous service. And, you know, I definitely understand what Ken is saying about the tension between trying to do as much as you can now because, you know, the, the problem is there and, and people are hurting versus the resources for the long term. It's like the right now solutions versus the right solutions. And there's a lot of people putting their. And there's a lot of people putting their heads together. I, I met with Peter Kelman and Carolyn, who you said on screen, uh, today there. So you do have different folks exploring different options. They were looking at, uh, sort of a pallet structure, uh, that may in the interim, you know, help to provide dignity and, you know, a shower with people, much like we were talking about with the trailer at one point. Do you remember that? Unfortunately, the trailer, uh, didn't hold up to below zero temperature, so, and not, not a great fit in Vermont. But there might be some other options. And, you know, Peter and Carolyn, um, have identified possible community partners on this too. So it's something to take seriously. I think, uh, we're meeting with Ken on that in the next couple of weeks to hopefully, uh, see if there's something there. But I, I just wanna like, again, hats off to Ken. Just one of the most selfless people I know here. And, uh, it's, it's exhausting work and, uh, it, it's more than just a gig. In another way, it's more than just a volunteer opportunity, real passion, uh, comes in. So, um, you know, hats off to everybody. I think we'll be hearing maybe some more about some short-term solutions. Uh, you know, locker is definitely still a need. You know, laundry facilities, but hopefully, uh, we can get a really tight consultant report together, um, and come up with a solution that's gonna really help people for, for years and years to come, um, as well. So just thanks for everybody doing this work.
Uh, yeah, Jennifer, go ahead.
Hi, yes, um, I agree with everything that both Connor and Ken have said. I also think that it's really important to acknowledge the people that are on the ground, the social workers, the housing coordinators, all the people at Capstone, Downstreet, at Circle, all the agencies that are working with our community members that are houseless right now. And we are tired, um, because there are so few resources left. And hotels are at capacity and staffing is at capacity and there's, there's just not enough, um, for Washington County, for Chittenden County, I mean, all of Vermont. You know, it's, it's this entire state. We just need more infrastructure. We need more people. And as a social worker, it, it hurts to know that, you know, my hands are tied, that there is nowhere for me to send some of the families that I work with. So, um, I truly appreciate, um, my colleagues out there that are, you know, feeling the same way I am, especially around this time of year. Delivering packages, um, toys to children in hotels is really not a fun thing to do. But we put on a smile and try to make their day. And so I want community members that are houseless that are here, I want you to know that there's a lot of people that are fighting for you and trying to do what they can with what they've got. And I am on this city council to try to make things move forward, um, at a higher level than my job. So I appreciate your presence here tonight and I appreciate my colleagues and all the council and Madam Mayor for all the work that we're trying to get done. Thank you.
Thank you. I also wanna just agree. I'm so grateful for, for this report, Ken. And please extend our gratitude to everybody involved, the homelessness task force. I have particular thanks that I wanted, um, address, uh, regarding the, um, the report that you all provided with us. But I'm gonna hold off for a second because I wanna check in, uh, with the public, uh, and see if there are comments. We'll start with folks in person. Go ahead.
Steve Whitaker again. Trying, I think, is the opposite operative word there. Trying, uh, two and a half years now, uh, and we still don't have lockers. We still don't have laundry. We still don't have unlocked phone charging. It, it really is a travesty that folks can, you know, sit here and pat each other on the back and pretend like we're trying so hard. But I brought to your attention the problem for, of Carrie. Where, so we allow Green Mountain Transit to violate their lease by not opening their bathrooms on the strict terms according to the lease. Now we're allowing another way. We're giving money to Another Way so they can violate their agreement with Christ Church, which is that all the residents at Christ Church get to use the warming space. She can't get to use the warming space because we negotiated the agreement and ignored it, even after it was brought to your attention. So, the, did, did everybody follow that? Did anybody not understand what I just said? No, nobody had. So, it was September. I got the as-built drawings. The city owns the transit center. I got the as-built drawings from Public Works. I said, here's a bathroom. There's a five-inch sewer line running directly under the bathroom that has enough space to put a shower in. This was brought to the homelessness task force. This was brought to Public Works. Nobody did a damn thing about it. And now here we are, December, going into January, and people still don't have a place to shower, you know? And it's just a cluster screw of mismanagement that is just outrageous. You know, we, we wanna talk about pat ourselves on the back for peer outreach, we're still leaving people out in the cold. People are sleeping in frozen temperatures right here on 16 Main, you know? And we don't even bother to make Public Works say on the ice, so they have to walk up an ice grade, you know? It's just atrocious. It's really atrocious. Y'all should spend a couple nights out there yourself, you know? The, the consultant, they're talking about spending 25,000 to talk about, you know, root causes of homelessness. We know that people get evicted, people get, you know, kicked out, marriages come apart, you know, et cetera. People have drug problems, whatever. That's not the issue. The issue is our callous disregard for two and a half years later, still leaving people out in the cold. Let them eat planning studies. Let them eat thanks. We noticed in the, in this week's press that Burlington, uh, probably due to Dan being one of the more responsive and responsible people on this council, took the idea of the soft shelters. So it's gonna take them five years to build interim housing, you know, or permanent housing for folks in Burlington. But they're gonna implement soft shelters, you know, immediately. Soft shelters is the only way we can put people indoors who do not fit in, uh, a horrendous situation you heard described earlier. I don't think it's safe during a pandemic to pack people in a room without adequate ventilation. You're setting yourself up for a, a real ugly situation. Build more Gerton Parks. That's an example of our task force leader, you know? As if Gerton Park is a dignified shelter for people. You really, guys, y'all really need to, uh, take it to heart and I encourage you to spend a night out or two and, and realize that this is the most miserably pathetic effectiveness of any initiative that I've ever seen in the city.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Jennifer.
Mr. Whitaker, I would ask you to spend some time with me and get to know me and know my history. I have been homeless. Thank you. Thank you. I think it would be important for you to know everybody's history before you accuse them of not understanding.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anyone else? Yes, go ahead.
Hi, Carrie Kelly. I would say, I think it's a great idea and I was hoping for a long time that it would be made into some type of warming shelter, but that will not be an option for me. Your police will continually drag me out, so I will eventually be victim number three of exposure. So, I will have nowhere to go. But I am not homeless because of drug addiction or anything that I did. Mine is domestic violence. I've been fleeing for my life for three years from someone. I have a refrain from abuse order that police refuse to uphold. His uncle is a in-law enforcement and manages to sort of speak to local law enforcement to get him out of issue. When I call for help, I tell them to go right, they go left. So, he's not that elusive. He's nearby. I've had my SSDI taken by him and everything else, so I am penniless. I can't go out and just pay somewhere to live, or I would. I am not able to use Another Way's resources to receive mail, to get a birth certificate or my SS, uh, SS, um, social security card so I can get a job and get housed working at a resort, uh, because they refuse me services, which seems odd. Having worked briefly on the Berry Task Force with Erica, who is employed there, who ghosted me after I got a very nice sizable grant in October for phones, um, I feel upset that I lost three people that I may have personally had contact with at one point because they probably had no phone, you know, to call. The great thing about, you know, Qlik is they did increase their data, but then they started charging for phones. So a lot of people didn't know. But I don't fault anybody for not knowing what it's like to be homeless. No one should be. It's a difficult process. There'll be more of us. I'm part of Mosaic. Mosaic has a small facility. I would like to urge you to look into putting a domestic violence, uh, shelter in, uh, Montpelier, if you could. You do have several buildings. I mean, I, I'm not sure if the recreation center was ever bought. That's a possibility and I think there's a couple other empty buildings, but any little bit helps us. There's a lot of other domestic violence survivors out there. We are fleeing, but we're not as equipped as some to live on the streets and around others. We get taken advantage of, things happen. But I have a suggestion, actually, for the showers. It's kinda simple and stupid. If you guys were to put in just like $40, I mean, it's kinda silly. It might be a little messy, but if I brainstorm, I might be able to come up with something. Camping showers are about $40. And they can be hooked to faucets and whatnot. If we sort of put a tub or something, something large, maybe. Well, I'll think about it, but we could probably even hook that up at my shelter. Another Way, of course, only has, I believe, one shower that I've used in the past when I was allowed entry. Even if the bus station would be so kind to, as to donate, well, not for me, but like a shower, um, one of the restrooms, male or female, whatever, it doesn't really matter. Just so you have running water through it. That could work. People do it camping all the time. It's not the greatest, but I'll tell you what, a shower is great, you know, wipes aren't the best. It's hard to wash your hair. If you would consider a female shelter at this point, due to the situation, I know there's lack of funds. Like, I know there was an issue with Bethany due to funding and services. But I think a lot could be taken care of in a few days, just by getting that social worker, I think her name is Susan Lemire, and she works in between Berry and Montpelier. She'd be happy to sit with anyone. She found me on the street, you know, and helped me and got me out because police refused to assist me in any way and I wasn't getting any help from another way. There are other people like me that don't get services. I'm not the only one. It's just, I'm not a bad person. I'm not a drug addict. I don't drink. I don't do anything. But I do speak my mind. I'm considered an activist and I'm not gonna stop. But, uh, I'm very in favor of police reform, as your local law enforcement knows. And, um, I also had a couple small questions. If it would be possible to get some of those services at the shelter, maybe slight assessments of needs? You know, drug addiction is a mental illness, but maybe you can parlay some of that together. You can seek housing through those groups. You could seek housing through treatment. If people aren't willing to for treatment, then you can go through mental health because there will be psychological ramifications, brain damage, whatnot. So that would be another option to sort of push us out into some other programs, so it's not so cost, costly, period. My other thought was, let me see. The other was the planning for illness. I just wanted to know what the plan was. My big issue at one point, I couldn't get any transportation to even get tested. Will there be rapid results tests available at the shelter? Just in case we do need them, to have them on premises, so we don't have to travel on the buses or anything like that. And when you're sick, it's kinda hard. And then afterwards, would, would there be a respite? Cause CDC recommends about 20 days of respite after being treated in a hospital or some type of quarantine area, or if you have any facilities where people could, like a bottom floor of a motel or something to keep the sick, just so it doesn't spread at an alarming rate. I heard of Elysium. I don't know where that is. I know it's a respite nearby. I don't know if that's a possibility. And I think that's all I'd see. I saw several taxi companies, but I know in Burlington, Green Cab had a cooperative with the hospitals to give people's rides home, which was an issue at CBMC and Berry for people getting home. So that might be something you could look into, how they structured it. They worked it somehow. Or you could couple it with Medicaid possibly. I don't know. Medicaid does a lot of rides. Medicaid needs a little help as well. But that's not your job for that. But other than that, those are just like my thoughts. I'm just, you know, concerned because if we don't have transport to do these things, people are gonna spread. And that's, that's all I, I was sort of thinking of. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Just, um, for Ms. Kelly and Mr. Whitaker and anybody else who might be paying attention tonight, the city does have showers available at our recreation center. They are available. We can't advertise it because it's not ADA accessible, so it can't be considered a public place, but they are available for people to use if they wish. And they can contact Cameron if they have any questions. Those have been available really since summer. So the city has made those showers available and we certainly hope people will use them.
Great, thank you.
Excuse me?
Yep, okay, great, thank you. All right. Any other comments from the public, particularly, oh yes, go ahead. Yes, yes.
I, I didn't get too prepared on this tonight. But before I speak, I just wanna say that many times I can't hear what people are saying. I do have hearing difficulty, but also with the mask, I think everyone needs to really speak up more. Because it's such a difference when you don't have the mask and you can look at, read lips kind of a little bit, you know, it helps out. So I, I'm hoping you can hear me and...
I don't think they can hear you in the back.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better.
Oh, see, I've got it now.
There you go.
So I, I just hope everyone also will be mindful of that because many times I can't hear many of the members on the council and I really wanna hear them. And I need a hearing aid, but, you know, people are in different stages of that and it takes time to get one. So just the mask thing really makes a difference. I just will be general, general comments. I am very much for bathrooms and lockers. And I, I wish that could be seen more as a real welcoming center for Montpelier. Montpelier's state capital, but we don't have, I think it really needs to be like comprehensive for everyone, you know, to have a welcoming center that has nice bathrooms and lockers. I am for, uh, the pallet initiative, um, that's been talked about. I don't think, you know, building big housing units is great and everything, but not everyone can live in that style of housing. And I really think we need to go with, with the options of tiny homes and temporary shelters too, for the kind of shelters that can be put up and taken down because we are in climate change. We will see natural disasters. I mean, can you imagine if Vermont was like Kentucky is right now? I mean, can you imagine? I mean, that's just horrific. So we really need to be more prepared on, on emergency shelter. And I think the pallet company covers both. So the bathrooms, pallets. I thought this person that just spoke had some really great things to say and some good ideas. I wasn't for the, the planning study completely, the part about, um, paying people to say, why are people homeless? I think that's already been said a lot. You have a lot of committees throughout the state. I would have rather seen that money go to, uh, you could pay each person that's homeless and divide up that $10,000. I don't have too much else, except, uh, I think it's called the Gerton Park structure. I, I really will look forward to, I hope, getting better... will look forward to, I hope, getting better, some signage there. I don't know if there's any signage, but I'm very anti-littering, and I just think that, that people need to be made more aware that there are the trash cans and the recycling right out front. So that's great. And I know Steve said it might be a bad idea to have more shelters like that, but actually, I think that'd be good to have a few of those because people need to gather. People need to be social. I see a lot of people hanging out there and not just, not just staying overnight there, but people need a place they can get under and, you know, out of the weather and talk. And a lot of people can't afford to go in a store and buy something or a cafe, and we need that. We need that even in the winter. Some places people can have a roof over their head, you know, several small places or a few big places in different areas where people could gather and talk, you know. And another thing I want to mention is frequently when homeless, people talk about homelessness, they frequently mention drug addiction, you know, all kinds of things like that. And a lot of times, it's simply, as I think a lot of people here know, is, but I'm going to say it, is the expensive rentals is just insane. And I think really we should come down to looking at some regulation on that at times. And many times, people lose their housing for so many other reasons. And we need to be mindful that it's not just substance abuse or criminal history or something. And take that into account because that is, I lost my housing. I don't drink. I don't smoke. I don't have pets. It's a pretty rough story that I won't go into, but the lease ended. Basically, I made a, I asked for a reasonable request on something, and they ended my lease. So, well, it was up for renewal, and I'd already gotten the paperwork to renew. But then when I asked, I thought, well, if I'm going to live here, I'm going to ask for this reasonable request. And after they got my request, the next day, they ended my lease. My, they didn't renew. They said, we're not renewing. And, you know, I don't know if a lot of people know that you might have a lease, and it can end, you know, it doesn't have to be renewed. There's, I think it's called no cause. And so you're not always protected because you have a lease and you think it's going to renew. It doesn't always, and they don't have to have a reason. I think the situation with rentals really needs to be addressed. Many people lose their housing for many other reasons. And this has really gotten to be a really poor, a really poor way to live, you know, when we have so much that's, you know, possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Oh, Mary, would you just come and say your name for us again, just for the record?
Pardon me?
If you would say your name again.
Oh, yes. Mary Messier, now residing in Montpelier.
Great. Thank you. Yep. All right. And I know we have a couple folks digitally who would like to say something. So we'll first go to Deborah Glotman. Go ahead.
Hi there. I run a program called the Mitzvah Fund. We provide veterinary, both dentistry and surgery, and multiple different things for homeless people along with veterans and low-income seniors. I work closely with Bill, with Will Eberly, Dawn on the task force as well. I just wanted the council members and the public to know that we exist. We will have a mobile unit hopefully in the middle of February, and then we will be a lot more visible if we can find a place to park it in Montpelier. But I just wanted everybody to know that we have resources for folks that have, especially homeless folks, that have animals that need care. And often people will stay outdoors versus give up their animals. So we, you know, we want to help everybody that we can. So I just want you guys to know that we're out there, and we do currently help social services along with Montpelier Police Department when they arrest someone and there's a dog in the car, they call me, and the dog comes and stays until a family member can retrieve the animal. So we're, we're on the, we're not that visible yet, but we are here, and we want you guys to know about us.
Great. Thank you. And if I could make one comment about that, just in terms of like finding a parking spot in Montpelier, I guess I would just encourage you to work together with the city staff to arrange that. And thank you for doing that, that good work. All right. Vicki Lane, go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to, somehow my computer did things, so I didn't catch what Deborah Glotman was saying. But I just wanted to go back to what Mary was saying pertaining to the rents. I cannot comprehend how anyone can afford to rent these days because I see the rents that are advertised, and I would all, I would immediately be knocked out of, because I don't make that much money to even afford a rent. If I didn't have my house in so many, as many years as I do, I'd be out on the street because I just don't have that much monthly income to afford any kind of a rental. So I would encourage if there's any way to put some kind of regulations or whatever on runaway rental fees. It just seems ridiculous to pay the things I see people having to pay. I don't know how they can afford it. That's just my comment.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else with us digitally wish to make a comment? Yep, go ahead, Peter Kelman? Oh, we can't hear you. You are still muted. There you go.
Okay. Sorry. Peter Kelman from Montpelier. Connor mentioned that Carolyn Ridpath and I have been working on ideas, very concrete ideas, that the council might be able to act on more quickly. And I'd just like to share some of those thoughts with you today. This winter, there'll be somewhere between forty and sixty chronically unhoused people living outside in Montpelier once again. And these unhoused people have no permanent shelter where they can safely leave their belongings when they need to leave their makeshift outdoor shelters to run errands, go to appointments, to socialize with others, to use a toilet and sink, to go to the laundromat, to hang out somewhere that is warm and dry. In short, to carry out all the activities that most of us can do in our own homes or by driving our own cars. These unhoused people deserve dignified autonomous shelter that protects them and their personal belongings from the elements. They need and deserve to be able to privately take warm showers and use sanitary toilet facilities. And many of these unhoused individuals will continue to sleep outdoors in temporary shelters this winter because they don't qualify currently for existing state shelter programs, or are not allowed in group shelters, or for behavioral reasons, or have emotional difficulty being housed in congregate settings like cold weather overflow shelters. Our idea of something that could be done quickly is to establish a downtown hub where, which has been previously thought about doing in the city parking lot behind St. Augustine's Church. This downtown hub would have three components, all of which, well, can be gotten from the pallet company or other companies. One is a bathroom unit consisting of at least two private temperature-controlled enclosures, each containing a toilet, a sink, and a shower, and that works in twenty-degree below zero weather. A temperature-controlled daytime community shelter space to be available for use by unhoused people, especially during inclement weather and periods of low and high temperatures, can work in the summer to get out of the extreme heat. A mini-split heat-exchange unit for heating and cooling the community shelter space, and very importantly, sizable storage lockers to be maintained inside the community shelter space so unhoused people can securely store their personal belongings when they need to be out and about. Now, just to point out what some of the strengths of this would be. The focus of this hub, although not limited to chronically unhoused people, that is the main focus here because these are the folks who are falling between the cracks of the various state programs addressing the plight of unhoused people in our community and region. So a community shelter space with bathrooms, showers, private lockers are important to allow chronically unhoused people to have dignity, mobility, and safety. They would be able to move from showers to a warm space where they could also safely store their personal belongings in private lockers, and then be able to run the errands and go to other safe and warm daytime areas like the library, City Hall, Another Way, and the Transit Center. By locating something like this in the city parking lot behind St. Augustine's, the unhoused users would be near city services, including police, fire, and ambulance, and the Community Justice Center. They would be near grocery and other shopping, near the laundromat, the library, Another Way, Washington County Mental Health Services space on Barry Street, other downtown locations, as well as public transportation to get them to appointments in Barry and Berlin. And this hub could, would be a well-maintained daytime destination downtown for unhoused folks who spend the night outside, thereby providing an alternative to sitting on cold sidewalks in front of stores or in the drafty Gertin Park structure currently located on Main Street between the drawing board and the multi-use path, which would please store owners, I believe, and permit the Gertin Park structure to be available for use by a wider range of community members as it was originally intended for. Now, we've heard from many people that we've talked to concerns about staffing, but we believe that this hub could be staffed during hours of operation by paid former and currently unhoused people and community volunteers, all of whom could be trained and supervised by community service professionals like the city police, social worker, and outreach workers from Another Way, Good Sam, and Washington County Mental Health Services. Some or all of these professionals could use the hub as a part of their base of operations, enabling them to check in on a regular basis. And if incidents that were beyond the skills of staff were to, the staffing were to occur, both the police and the EMTs would be close by. It could be called. I just want to close by saying that these, if you were to do, look at the pallets, these are temporary structures so that when more permanent arrangements can be made, such as having a hub at the Twin City Motels, these can be taken down if it's decided that we don't want them downtown. Otherwise, you know, they're temporary, but they can last up to ten years. We really, Carol, do you want to chip in on this about empathy and empowerment?
Peter, if Carolyn Ridpath would like to weigh in, I'm going to let her raise her hand. There's other people who would like to, who've had their hand raised.
Okay, then I'll just wrap up and say this, that winter is upon us, and once again, the living conditions of many chronically unhoused people in our community are appalling and morally unacceptable for a community like ours, where so many of us can take for granted the comforts and privileges that we enjoy that are currently unavailable to numbers of our fellow citizens. And to continue to talk endlessly about this matter, to haggle over details, to cite real but solvable obstacles, to kick the can down the road, once again, is really unacceptable. The time to act on this is long past due, and I would implore the city council to begin such actions as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. All right. DeeDee Brush, go ahead. But you are also still muted, so we cannot hear you yet. He's still, oh, there you go.
There you go. Sorry about that. I have a terrible cold, so I'm very husky. Excuse me. First of all, I'd like to say that what I'm hearing from Peter makes such amazing sense, and I would like to endorse that plan and ask the city council to move as quickly as possible to offer this kind of resource to those in our community who need safe and warm housing. The other thing I'd like to say is that I too agree, I guess it's already happened, but to me, to hire a consultant to tell us the roots of homelessness seems to have been perhaps an expense we did not need to incur. We, there are many, many, many studies about this. You probably already know what they are. We don't need to rehash that. We need to address those things that are at the root of that phenomenon for the people in Montpelier and Washington County. And that probably means housing, food security, jobs, and safety. And I very much would like to think that we are focused on that and not more studies, more reports, or more consultants. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Deborah Glotman, I'm going to skip over you for now since you've already spoken once. So I'm going to go to Carolyn, and I assume it's Carolyn Ridpath. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I want to support what the first woman said and what Peter said, that living outside is undignified. I mean, it's dangerous. It's a terrible way to live. And anything we can do to dignify, allow those people to achieve dignity, I think is very important. And I think by doing the bathroom warming shelter locker arrangement gives them that chance that they can come in, shower, put their stuff in a locker, and basically prepare for the day. And as Peter pointed out, they can go out. The first woman who spoke talked about the problems in even getting a shower. Now, if you go over to the rec center, they don't have towels. Just, it seems minor, but that's an important piece of taking a shower because people outside don't want to carry around a wet towel. So that's just one of the minor impediments there. But at any rate, I think that providing that warmth, that support essentially enhances what's already available. I think that the council and the homelessness task force have done an excellent job of fixing the pieces that we don't normally think about, like providing meals or snacks for people who are in the overnight shelter, or the Transit Center is a major plus in that constellation of support, the outreach workers and so forth. So I think that what we're suggesting takes it one step further and moves people toward a better way of living, even though it's still not good. I think that's all I've got to contribute at this point.
Thank you. And so just so you know, Deborah, we usually don't let people go twice, but if you have something short, that is okay.
Yeah, it doesn't have anything to do with what I spoke about earlier. My question is, has there ever, and this is just for maybe others' education, has anyone ever thought about going to anyone ever thought about going to some of these landowners or, you know, store owners or, like, for example, the funeral home is empty, they utilize, you know, where the Jacobs make their money there is in the parking spaces. Would it benefit the city if, you know, the city takes over having to do any of the rehab that comes from the funeral home and potentially make that into a warming center or, better yet, a shelter within our own capital city, which it just, it floors me that there is, we are the capital city, and we don't have a good option, a permanent option for our homeless. That's just a question, and if anybody has that answer, that would be great.
Thank you. I'm not sure about the answer to that, but if someone does, what's that? Yeah, it is a good idea. All right. Any other comments, either in person or digitally? It's short.
Many of the problems you're hearing about tonight that are still recurring have to do with the council having, only beginning now to get their head around this issue or commit to resolving it, but we have offshored our public accountability by giving grants to Another Way and Good Sam, et cetera. We don't see the paper trail of who's falling through the cracks. It's not subject to public records law. So that's why I've insisted that if you want this stuff to work and to follow through and find out what's not working, you need to build some accountability transparency provisions into those grants to nonprofits.
Thank you. All right. If it's short, I probably should not have opened the door here, but go ahead. A bunch of grants listed that groups may not be aware of. There's a lot. So you'd have to go through and see which one would work best for you. I don't know if they're all new or whatnot, but this was just as of like two days ago. And also, I just wanted to thank the community themselves. Even the jacket I have on my back right now, because Another Way refused me resources, I had no gloves, no hat, no nothing, because I was just locked out of my room. I would have froze to death. So I wanted to thank the community at the time I had no money, no nothing, that they gave me that and they kind of saved me from the exposure. But in the meantime, I also wanted to suggest if it would be possible for the library to maybe open the basement or one of the rooms that they don't have in use all the time. I know it is considered free the first couple hours, and then like $5 each additional, but for some reason, they don't want to rent that to me, even if I have the money. But being homeless is very tiring, so sometimes you just want to like kind of lounge out a little bit, because it's like a constant thing. It's not that we're lazy, it's just like a constant struggle, like pushing my stuff, carrying my bags, so that it's not like stolen and I don't have clothing to wear. That's just a thought. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Okay. All right, so coming back to council, just further thoughts. I'm happy to jump in here, too. I want to come back to the update memo that the homelessness task force provided with us. And so, Ken, I just want to point out, I was very interested in the proposed long-term solutions. Appreciated the variety of things that were there and the collaborations that embodied with the Washington County Continuum of Care, that it seems like that is going to be a really valuable partnership moving forward. And so, thank you for that. I'm looking forward to hearing more, you know, particularly about, you know, both the short-term and the long-term solutions. So, yeah, just wanted to pass that on. Thank you. Yeah. Other thoughts? I'm going to go, Donna and Connor.
I was wondering, Ken, and thank you for the report, if there's any timelines. You talk about just currently trying to finalize the questions. So I'm just interested in what kind of timelines you're using.
Yeah, well, soon on the grant. I mean, I think certainly within the next two meetings, we should have something hopefully will be January 5th, or is it the 4th, the first day of the month? And we'll definitely come back there. I mean, the hub concept is something that's in there as well. And we had been hoping to continue the conversation about how the pallet homes could work. We had raised some questions, some logistical questions that I think would be really helpful in terms of putting together an actionable plan with however we build something. I just would like to say, it would be, the siding is always an issue, and so one huge help the city could provide would be help with space. You know, I know people are always talking about the rec building or the park between shaws and the drawing board. People mentioned the funeral parlor. We have had outreach to different landowners, but, you know, you know, the bricks and mortar part is often not the hard part. I think proper staffing, I think volunteers is great, but frankly, like, for liability reasons, for a lot of other reasons, accountability reasons, you need somebody on payroll. I mean, we just, you know, we had a cleaner who could show up to the Transit Center to clean up after the first and second night, to make sure that that nice facility is well taken care of. Sorry, Donna, I just kind of.
No, all good information. Go ahead.
Yeah. But, and again, it's brutal, it's brutal that it's winter right now and there are people outside. So right now, the immediate timeline is always, is an abyss, and it's horrible for the folks who are out there.
Well, and I wasn't trying to put you on the spot for all the activities, just I meant to focus, and I wasn't clear, on the study. The two components of the study, if there's actually a task plan and a sort of general timelines with them have been assigned.
You know, I should know this about what Will has spearheaded. I know they're actively working on that.
If you don't have it, maybe you could obtain it and pass it on to us?
Oh, you are muted.
You weren't muted, Ken.
Sorry. I think I remember it's just a matter of months, like it's like three to six, something like that. And then, you know, I understand that the big pool of money you all have is like eight months out or something like that, so it would be helpful to have this, you know, have the planning study move quickly. And hopefully, you know, within the next, I would say, we'll talk about it on the 4th or the 5th, and hopefully have some real cohesion on that, and then try to get something to you by mid-January.
Thank you.
Thank you. Connor?
Well, I'll be a bit repetitive, because I just hope I'm answering some of that, but I think it's important, it was brought up, the study a couple times by folks in public comment, and it's important to note just a portion of that goes to the continuum of care. I think like, as we're looking at this, like, it's an issue that doesn't recognize geography, kind of like, you know, PFAS. We're really glad to see the Berry City Council appoint the homelessness task force as well. So we're hoping to, you know, chip in and, you know, look at some of the demographic information countywide, but just want to clarify, the majority of the funding in that would go towards, you know, answering some of the questions we had when we had the budget there. You know, what does it look like exactly? How much is it going to cost? Who could staff it? Where's it going to be? Because right now, you know, I think we agree, it should be four walls, probably. It should be warm, it should have a restroom facility, but there's a bunch of different ways you could take that, so hoping to nail that down soon. So like Ken said, when that ARPA money comes, we can hit the ground running, and there's no delay on it.
I'll tell you, one of my biggest questions I thought was going to be answered, it was very practical, is it a big space that we take and renovate to put lots of people in one place? Or do we do something like the pallets and make a temporary transitional, not necessarily temporary, but a transitional place? And so, to me, that's what I'm really looking for. What's our best way to meet these people's needs that we know of?
We've got to iron that out really soon.
Yeah. Other thoughts, questions, comments? Yeah, Lauren, go ahead.
One, I don't know if this is a question, just having our wonderful Representative Mary Hooper here, not to put her on the spot, but I'm just curious, like, listening to this, and maybe it's just planting some seeds for you, but, you know, what opportunities, you know, you started off with your colleagues, Connor was kind of framing up the issues that we're wrestling with and how, you know, we're doing a lot of work, we're kind of making progress. Obviously, this is a big statewide issue and with budget implications well beyond what a city can do. So I don't know, either from, you know, programs or things that you're hearing, you know, the peer support outreach workers, like, are there opportunities for the state to help invest in some of these initiatives so that we could do more sooner and support more people in our community? And I don't know if you have any thoughts, I hate to put you on the spot, but, you know, hopefully it could just be an ongoing conversation, too, of how we partner in this work, because obviously, you know, we are partnering and we're trying some, I think, you know, interesting things, and would love to expand it, and if there's ways to, you know, just be in good touch with you about how the state might help support that as well. Would love that.
So if I may, thank you, and this is something that I've thought about. This is absolutely a statewide issue, and to be perfectly honest, I am concerned that the solutions are being offloaded to communities rather than being addressed from a statewide standpoint. And so I'm always going to be pressing the Department of Children and Families and the Department of Mental Health and Dale to be fully funding their programs, which are providing these services and building the opportunities. And I think the partnership with communities is appropriate, but I don't think it's appropriate for communities to be forced into taking the lead on this when it truly is a statewide issue. And I'm worried that we not see kind of a continual kind of offloading of responsibility for this.
Yeah, yeah. If I could ask you a question about that, who does our legislative delegation go to within the State House to try to get that change, to help encourage the state to take that on and take that responsibility and be the leader in the housing issue and services around people that are unhoused?
So there are two committees in the House that have primary responsibility for this. The first is called House General and Military Affairs, and I think it has housing in their title, too. And they are carefully and deeply looking at and have been the architect of a lot of the housing proposals. So it's House General that's responsible for the housing side, and in terms of the service side, it's House Human Services that is responsible for that, although healthcare comes into it. And then frankly, it all comes together in my committee, the House Appropriations Committee, because, you know, we have to figure out what the right programs are, but at the end of the day, this is just, it's a matter of money and workforce. As you all know, the community-based partners who are trying to provide these services are just overwhelmed with demand and really struggling to bring in the resources, you know, the human, finding people to do really hard work. So I answered your question in terms of who should be doing this, but frankly, I would also be asking the executive branch what they're going to be doing for this. So in the budget adjustment, which my committee has already received, we did not see a substantial response to the ongoing problem, and I had been hoping that we would. We may get something the first week of January, I know they're bringing us more, but I, so ask the executive, too, ask the governor's office, too, how they're going to partner and make sure that the resources are where they need to be.
I think Connor has a follow-up, unless you.
Just a follow-up of that, I think municipals depend maybe too much on the Vermont League of cities and towns, and I feel like we should really start a serious campaign that, yes, the Vermont League can lead the way, but that we need to muster municipals and their residents to really make it clear to our legislators and our executive branch, this is huge, it's got to be done this time.
Connor, go ahead.
Mary, I want to thank you, you've been so great offering to go to any meetings with the administration or other legislative committees that have jurisdiction over this. The one thing we were hitting with the senators just earlier there was we have met with BGS, and we feel like we have a fundamental disagreement with them in terms of the public restrooms there. We feel there's such a need in town, because this could be providing services for washing facilities, showers, and other services that give people really the dignity that they need around the clock here. It's sort of a bricks-and-mortar expense, and it's something we'd love to be able to share that responsibility with the state there. So to the extent we could maybe get a conversation going on the Capitol bill around some of the expenses with that, that would be fantastic.
Thank you, Connor. I know that you had raised that earlier, and I, so I appreciate that follow-up, and let's talk more about that conversation. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
I think Bill has something to.
Yeah, Mary, just to follow up on your comment about the state's role and municipality's role, and what we're seeing, and I know you and I have talked about this, is this is falling to the local governments because the resources aren't there, you heard Council member Warren refer to that earlier with her social worker hat on, and there's just no place else to go. So people in our community come here saying, what are you going to do, because nobody else is doing it? And I take that one step further, it really falls disproportionately, again, on those communities with sort of established downtowns and services. It's not every town and city, and I think that may create some problem in your legislature, because many of your fellow reps aren't dealing with this, or their communities aren't dealing with this, but like lots of downtown issues that we've talked, you and I have talked about forever, this is one where, you know, the Burlington's, the Montpelier's, the Berry's, the Rattleborough's, you know, the places with buses, the places with services, the places with healthcare, are the places that people are coming for those services and are demanding it, and it falls disproportionately on our residents, taxpayers, businesses. And the state really does need to step up and fund some of these things, you know, as I think you've seen a lot of willingness from people, volunteers, professionals, and elected officials to do our part. But right now, we're in a world that we're not, you know, that's all new to us, and we don't have the expertise, and we're trying to find our way. And so we would look to the state to really rebalance the scales.
I understand that, as you said, Bill, that, you know, we have had this ongoing conversation, and sadly, it seems to me, and I've watched this over the past four years in the appropriations committee, the state is trying to shed gloss, and the way they're shedding it is by pushing them down on the municipalities. And you're right, and this is the reason the league isn't as large of a voice, it's because they're representing all of the towns, and it's not, you know, this is not an issue for Sutton or Derby, the way it is in the built-up areas. I get it, and we need to keep working on it. And let me just add, you know, and there's kind of a view that there is a ton of money floating around that can be used to solve these problems. I mean, we've heard of really rather phenomenal revenue forecasts, and we're in deep competition over a lot of issues. A lot of people are looking for funding for a variety of issues. So please keep advocating, folks.
Well, thank you. Anyone else else they want to share? Okay, thank you, and thank you for sticking around through this issue, Representative Hooper, that's excellent. And I also am encouraged to hear, Ken, that we. Hooper, that's, that's excellent, and I also am encouraged to hear, Ken, that we are maybe hearing again from you soon, with some updates and suggestions, so we look forward to that, any other thoughts here, team? Okay, thank you, everybody, and we'll, you know, it's certainly still on our radar, let's hope that we can come up with some actionable things soon, all right, thank you, all right, so we're, actually, it is 8:40, and so we're going to take a 10-minute break, it's 8:41, so we'll be back at 8:51, to jump in with talking about the ballot procedure, when we return. Ballot procedure, and so for this, I'm turning it over to John Odom, our city clerk, go ahead.
Well, I'll be quick, there isn't a lot to report, the, just, the Roxbury Select Board, you know, decided to not decide, they know that there's a, they pushed it to their January 10th meeting, because they know there's a big bill, the first bill legislature's going to work on is this election thing, and they want to, you know, they want to know what's going to happen, you know, I, I don't want to give any opinions on what anybody should or shouldn't do, so we'll just have to see how it goes, it certainly cuts things close for me, which is unfortunate, but it is what it is, and I would say, for what the implication of that is for you all, is potentially nothing deciding on what you want to do, I mean, if you want to go ahead and authorize a, you know, mail-in election for the city regardless, you know, that would create four elections, four ballots, one of them gets mailed out, and we would certainly put a bright colored piece of paper in there saying, if you need an absentee vote from any of these others, contact us, it would create a tremendous, potentially a huge amount of absentee requests for us, that would be very difficult to manage, but Crystal and I did some brainstorming today, so whatever you all decide, we'll make it work.
Okay.
But, so, yeah, so I mean, if you all want to do that, if you all want to go ahead and authorize the school, give them their, your blessing, I don't see why you shouldn't at this point, no point in holding off, but, so, either/or, I have some recommended language for motions that pull some phrases out of the statute, so...
And they're in our, the two phrases on the, the two things that are in the recommended action of the cover sheet?
Uh, no, I didn't phrase them that way, I can, I've been sitting here phrasing things as...
Excuse me, John, you've got to force fetus, you've got to give us the language.
Well, I mean, I'll just, I can read them real briefly, the first one, if you all decide to give the school your blessing, I would use language pursuant to 17 VSA Section 2680, Montpelier City Council grants its approval for the Montpelier Roxbury School District to mail its annual meeting ballot to all active registered voters in the district, and I added on, should the school board so choose, and should the Roxbury Select Board grant its approval, just so...
I'll make that motion.
Well, and the alternative one was what?
And then the other one would be, for you all, pursuant to 17 VSA Section 2680, authorize the city clerk to mail an annual city meeting ballot to all active registered voters in the city, so that would be for the city election, if you chose to do that, the other would be for authorizing, giving the school your blessing, should they choose to.
So we could do both?
So we need to.
Is that, like, both motions, they're not mutually exclusive?
No, I, I suggest breaking them up into two.
Oh, you mean two separate motions?
Two separate motions, yeah.
Oh, okay, but, okay, but doing both of them, potentially?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, so, Donna, did you want to make that?
I did that so quick, because I didn't want to have to try to reword it, but my intention would be that we would be authorizing the Montpelier Roxbury School District to conduct a mail-in election, and to send all the ballot, to send ballots to all the active voters.
Is that, you want to...
That's my motion, with the, with the lovely language you had.
Oh, okay, so that's, you have moved it out.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, there's a second over there, discussion about this particular one, Jay and then Jack, or Jack and then Jay?
No, go ahead.
Sure, I don't think it matters, so I just wanted to sort of come back to the earlier presentation, John, John, I'm disappointed, I don't see any unicorns, I'm just saying, but, but the, of more consequence is, there, there's a lot of variables here, right, so if, if the school district could decide not to do it, we, Rox, you know, Roxbury may decide not to do it, and be able to, so they may decide not to mail it out, and from your previous presentation, there's other scenarios where there may be some in-person ballots, right?
The way it's, it's two possible ways, really, it's going to shake out.
Yeah.
There are, think, think of it as there are four elections in play.
Right.
City, school, CVPSA, and the Career Center.
Right, that's right.
All four of those, if you all mail, have to do a mail-in election, then anybody else who does a mail-in election can piggyback, and that's covered, and the great thing for me, in that sense, is if the school piggybacks with us, the school has to pay for it, so that's nice, I like that, but, because the thing, they're going to end up having to pay for all this themselves, one way or the other, when it gets down to it, so scenario one, there is a city ballot with a school ballot, and both of those ballots are still available at the polling place, but at the polling place is going to be the only place you can find CVPSA or Career Center, unless you specifically call and ask for an absentee ballot of one or both to be sent to you, so then the other scenario would be that it's just the city, and then those other three ballots, including the city's ballot, are available at the polling place, again, should somebody choose, you know, to call and have one or all of them sent to them as an absentee ballot, so we're going to have to be tracking these as four different elections, and tracking absentee requests as, as four separate elections, or three, depending on how it goes, it's going to be a little odd, but the biggest, the, the biggest potential challenge for my office is going to be if the school does not get on there, because I suspect CVPSA, Career Center, a lot of people aren't going to be too concerned about asking for those ballots, I, I mean, I know, not trying to, you know, qualify the, you know, make any, cast any aspersions on the quality of those ballots, I just think they won't, but a lot of people are going to say, see that note and say, I don't have the school ballot, I want the school ballot, and so we'll get a lot of requests for absentee ballots, more than we otherwise would have gotten, so that's, that's the crush I'm worried about, although that's the crush, I think we've already found some workarounds to be able to manage, just the two of us, because it's just the two of us, unfortunately, due to the elections.
And so I, I bring that up, because my concern is that, you know, if we commit, my concern is that we, if, if one of the, the scenario plays out, where we, we're mailing our ballot, and others, you know, require a request, or coming to the, to coming to the building to vote, that we're sort of undermining that turnout, and I feel like, you know, a lot of folks will approach a lot of these things, some, particularly some of the smaller issues, passively, and will just assume that they, what they got in the mail is what they need to decide, or what, you know, I know if they come, then they'll get them all, which is, like you said, which is great, but I just worry that we're, it's disenfranchising folks who may not be understanding the decisions that they need to make, and I know there's a ton of variables in how it all plays out.
I mean, we'll make it as plain as we can, yeah. On the other hand, I know we're also going to get, there'll be pushback from folks concerned about COVID, if this, if the mail-in thing doesn't happen again, so I'm, I mean, you all know I'm in favor of it ideologically, I think in this case, I'm kind of agnostic about the implementation, I mean, it is going to happen for the August primary and the November general, so it may become an issue where people start to really have that expectation, and they get confused when they don't get a ballot in the mail, but I don't know that we're there yet, so...
Yeah, Jack?
I'm like you, I think that what we should be doing to make the, make it easier for everybody, we should do anything we can to make it easier for people to vote, and to get the maximum voter turnout possible, but what makes me concerned is that doing some kind of hybrid is going to make things much more confusing for people, and, and I think that's a, a bad thing, and so I'm not really sure what I think we should do. I, I think you said last time that you don't expect the Berry City Council to authorize mail-in voting for the, for the two entities for which they're a player, right?
Yeah, that's correct, and it's, that's been made pretty clear.
And Roxbury, I imagine what they're waiting for is see if the state's going to pay for it, right, and if the state's going to pay for it, they'll say, fine.
And who knows, otherwise.
Would it, would it make a difference in your planning for the work if we decided, well, let's do what Roxbury's doing, and wait to see what the legislature does, or should you, or should you have guidance from us right, right now, to make it, make it better?
Let's see, they're meeting on the 10th, y'all are meeting on the 12th, oh, man, that's less than two weeks before the filing deadline, I mean, I can make that work, without sweating too much, I don't have a lot of margin for error, but I have a little, so if you all wanted to wait for that decision, then that's, yeah, that's cool, I don't know if you'd want to go ahead and grant the school your blessing, or just wait, I don't know if it matters.
Go ahead, Don.
Well, that was my point, this motion doesn't do away with them not doing it, this is, this first motion is just dealing with the school district vote, it's the next vote, the general vote for the city, that's the one that affects Central Vermont Public Safety Authority and the other one.
I thought you praised yours all as one motion for both the...
No.
No?
No, there's two motions.
Yeah.
I have one motion.
They should really happen separately.
I agree, but I thought, I thought you had written it, phrased it as one, for both the school and the city, okay.
And, and my other question to John, procedure-wise, if we make any of these motions, and the legislatures lay out a different format in their first week in January, then it's a, it's no longer in, in effect, if they decide to say, this is how you're going to do your election at town meeting, then that overrules anything we decide here?
Um, yeah, I mean, it, at worst, it becomes redundant, because what a lot of folks would like to do is just do the same thing they did last year, again, now the question would be, does the Secretary of State have enough COVID money left to do it, I've heard conflicting things about that, honestly, I suspect they probably do, so that, that becomes a question, they're either going to tell us to do it, or they're not, and they're either going to pay for it, or they're not, but I think in any case, if we approve it, the worst that happens is that the approval is, becomes a redundancy.
So, thinking about even just the schools, and thinking about your argument, Jack, of, you know, does it create confusion, if the schools send one out, do you feel like that still is sufficient confusion, like, the potential for confusion, or, yeah, I don't know?
Probably not, because I think the schools and the city are what is important to people, and I think that the other two elections don't get a lot of public attention, and people are likely not to even think about it.
Okay, fair enough, so, any further discussion on this particular, about the schools mailing out ballots, yes, go ahead, Lauren?
Yeah, I mean, just, to me, the motion focused on the schools, I mean, if they want to do it, I think us signaling to Roxbury that we're going to give that approval now, instead of waiting, makes sense to me, so that they know that we think this is a good idea, and that, you know, in our, I mean, for me, speaking for me, my ideal is that we are doing it proactively for as many of the, as many of the elections as we can, I mean, just seeing what's coming with this new variant, I mean, it's going to be even worse than last year, potentially, so, like, I think we should be getting ready for that, so I think that, to me, seems like worthwhile, I'm still, yeah, I guess, like, if there's flexibility to see what they do, and then decide how the city would want to, because I, I would feel differently, I think if the school's going to be in person, then I think keeping it all together might make sense, so I, I think maybe we want to have that conversation later, but I think moving forward to the schools now makes sense.
My gut tells me that there's a 50/50 chance that they will not have passed their legislation by the, by the 12th, having said that, probably at that point, if they haven't passed it yet, we're going to know what it looks like, so...
Okay, any further comments about this particular item? Okay, there's been a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, okay, so, sounds like folks maybe want to hold off on the, the second part, is that sort of what I'm hearing, unless somebody wants to make a motion, I mean, I'm open to that, too, okay, so we'll revisit that one, hopefully that's at least partially helpful.
Oh, no, it's great, I totally...
We have some clarity.
I totally get what you're doing and why.
Yeah, yeah, Donna, yeah, go ahead.
Well, you know, John, sometimes the mayor has us do this straw vote, would you like to know what our straw vote would be, about mailing the city's ballot?
Well, I'm certainly curious intellectually, sure.
Okay, so, I would put a thumbs up, I think it's important, the voters get it.
Sure, I mean, do folks feel like they have a sense of what their straw vote would be? Yeah, okay, we, we, undecided, that's okay, or no.
Undecided, I, I think the city and the schools should do the same thing, and ideally, it should be mail, but if the schools aren't, aren't doing mail, then maybe we shouldn't either.
Okay, saw a thumbs up from Connor, any thoughts on that, Jay?
I...
Same, okay, thoughts from you, Jennifer?
Same.
Same, okay, yeah, yeah, cool, and Lauren agrees, okay, yeah, yeah.
This guy, this guy.
Yeah, so, well, now, now you know. So, to be continued on that one, yes, go ahead.
I want, Steve Whitaker again, I want to comment on the impact of this election on the Public Safety Authority, the, which, the thing you don't have time to dive into tonight, or it's not on the agenda yet, is going to get closer and closer to the ballot deadline, and a number of folks, one of the CVPSA board members just quit in disgust, others are about to quit in disgust, folks feel like the chair is trying to run it into the ground, the initiatives by the city managers are, without having the benefit of the approval of this council, I think it's going, I guess how this relates to the election, this council's going to have to make a very clear statement to the public about whether you're going to squander and flush their investments in a regional public safety authority in this election, because if this election gets meager turnout, or even attention, or even people fold spindle or mutilate their separate ballot for CVPSA, it's good, they're going to have, you, you will have squandered all the work, years and years of work, I'm reading the minutes from 10 years ago, efforts to get this thing created, and since 14, it was created, and I know Mayor Watson, you were very active in, in trying to see this succeed in 2017 and 18, so I just suggest that if you're going to have a unusual ballot arrangement, that the city make a very clear statement of informing the public about what's at stake here, because just to let chiefs run, run their own way, and continue the, continue the Montpelier monopoly on dispatch with a straw man partner of public mutual aid system, mutual aid system totally ignores public records requests and appeals, and Dan was not going to allow the city, this city to re-enter that contract, as soon as Dan was gone, your city manager put it on the consent agenda to approve that contract, so we're in bed with us, or we're in a contract with a straw man entity who now is being tried to serve up the whole ownership of a new radio system, no transparent governance... No transparent governance, no planning, nothing. Just hand it to the vendors and pretend like it's good for the people. So I'm asking you to do your homework, put it on the agenda, have a meeting, and make sure the public is well-educated on this topic before you squander all their investments made so far.
Thank you. I just want you to know, too, that the city manager has my full support. All right. Having said that, we're going to move on. All right. So we, I think that's it for this item, right? Okay. So we are on to the budget review for FY '23. Kelly, do you want to say anything? I see you're eager to come up. If you want to, you may. But I don't know.
Well, I think there were a few questions and things left over from last week, so I think Kelly was just going to...
Oh, yeah.
Provide the responses to those and then leave it to you folks, too.
Great.
Go forward.
I'm happy to provide just the updated budget option worksheet if you want to go through that again and just kind of take notes accordingly. But I also wanted to just speak to a couple of items that we talked about last time that we looked into for you or we have some response for, so I'll just kind of go down the list. They're in no particular order, so just in their large and small, so bear with me. So the first thing on the list, I just wanted to note, on page 12 of the budget book online, we've updated the housing task force to be the Housing Trust Fund. Just wanted to note that we did that. And if you'd like a new printed version of your book, because the print, we've been hearing it all the way around, is pretty small, I can do that. Just let me know. Then the next thing is we added $1,000 in for the USS Montpelier. It was not our intent to leave that out, so that was duly noted, and we've added it in. That's a net neutral change. The next thing on my list is the charging station. We just wanted to clarify intent with that. Our understanding based on the conversation was that we would look for grant funding and, if possible, would fund the charging station. We did not identify how that would happen as of yet, and so it's still sort of an open item. But I wanted to kind of highlight that so that we can talk it through a little bit more and you can let us know what you'd like to do with that. The next piece is we added the $30,000 for Downstreet Recovery Residence in Berry to the ARPA two list for your recommendation and just took a little bit of money away from the infrastructure portion of that for the water sewer. We also looked into the $15,000 for lobbying efforts in FY '22. Because revenues have performed better than we had anticipated, there is some money there that we could harvest off to the side to be able to cover that this year. So if you want us to do that, we can in '22. And then it's on your list of options for '23. And so we would just need to make sure that that remains, should that be what you'd like to do. So that's good to go. The next couple of items are related to the capital projects on the bond list. There were a few questions related to the street conversion, the lighting, and also Berry and Main. The question related to the streetlight conversion, it's $250,000, and when the payback would be on that. So we looked at the analysis that was previously done in '16. And if we move forward, we'll bet this even further, just to make sure that the numbers are good. I think they might actually be even more favorable at this point. But that being said, right now, based on the initial projections, it would be a 10-point, nine-year payback, and that would include an efficiency Vermont incentive. So should we move forward, we'll get those numbers into focus and just make sure that we report that back out once we have it. And then the other item in question for sort of the capital projects was the Berry and Main intersection project, just sort of noting what that entails. So it's $550,000, and it includes three kind of parts in the explanation that we got from Public Works. The first part is it's for the new traffic signal at the intersection, upgrades the software for the existing traffic signals at Main, State, and Main in Berlin. And then the third piece, which I think is important to note, is that they would be more responsive and coordinating with one another for traffic flow and congestion. So just wanted to highlight all of those items for that particular project. And that's the end of my list. So that's what we have been kind of working on for you. And I'll pull up the budget options worksheet, and then I didn't know if you had other questions for us or, you know, how you wanted to get started. Am I loud enough here? Sometimes I'm a loud fast talker, which is maybe not a good combination.
You could be a little closer. Could I add a little bit to the main when she's doing that? The main and State, Berry and Main Street traffic lights are more wonderful than you alluded to. They're not just an upgrade, but they put them in sync with the other lights. So if one light gets all jammed up, it reflects it in other places. So instead of being independent, it's really very responsive to traffic needs. And I'm looking forward to hoping it really works as it's proposed to work. It'd be a good addition.
Yeah, I agree. All right. So in terms of conversations, anything that we want to talk about on the list that Kelly just mentioned? I would like to talk about the charging station. My understanding had not been that it was grant-dependent, but that we would build it in and then should a grant be available, that they would replace it. At least that was my understanding. I'm open to hearing other thoughts. Yeah, that's your understanding as well, Donna? Okay. And Lauren shaking her head. Any other thoughts on this? Okay. And I guess I would say, just in part, I would rather be able to say with some certainty that we're going to move forward with that. Seek grants. Probably there are some available for this. But, you know, should we either not find one or not get one, that we hopefully would still be able to move forward?
Thank you for that clarification. I guess my question then would be, which funding source did you, were we, I think, maybe we were going to see if it was ARPA-eligible, maybe that's what was our homework?
Yeah, I do not think it is ARPA-eligible, just based on the eligibility. We do plan to review our ARPA list with the VLCT and take advantage of those resources. And so we'll certainly ask, but that I don't, just based on what the guidance is right now.
So that would come from, so then our choices would be either add it to the budget and raise the budget, put it in the capital plan and replace something else, or put it in the capital reserve money and replace something else.
Thoughts? Go ahead, yes.
What can we replace?
We have to look at that. Go through it.
Yeah.
If that's what you want, we can come back with a proposal. We misunderstood that.
So any other thoughts or opinions about where that should come from? I guess I would also just say, see if there is something that could be replaced potentially. I mean, there is, I guess, if I had to choose, I mean, I trust you all, but if I had to choose, my gut would be somewhere in the capital improvements plan, which, to be fair, I mean, like, how much wiggle room is there in that? You know, not necessarily any more than anywhere else, but just because that seems like where it would logically fit.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah. No, to be fair, yeah, we can see how the rest of this budget shakes out.
We put up the list. What's in that plan or is that too cumbersome?
I'm just trying to think about the best way to show what's in that plan.
Yeah, that's fine.
We can.
I'd agree that that's the smarter approach as opposed to adding it on and then hoping that we could make it back up with grant funding. So I do think that that's the right way.
Okay.
Yes, I can certainly pull up the list. Let's see.
Why don't we have a continued conversation and we need to come back to that weekend?
Okay.
Lauren had a thought. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, just briefly. I mean, I think it seemed like the vehicle purchase was really tied to, like, being able to move forward with trying out some of these electric vehicles, like, we need that charging capacity. I know, I had brought up grant funding with the federal infrastructure bill. I know that there's a good amount of money coming, but like, that guidance isn't even out yet. You know, who knows when that money will actually be available, how it will flow. And certainly, it doesn't seem clear yet how a community like ours will necessarily take advantage. I think there's good opportunity, but I would not want to, like, wait for that to, because then it seems like it's holding up then all the progress on the fleet.
I have a couple of thoughts.
Okay. Okay. Great. Anything else, Julie, oh, sorry, go ahead, Donna.
No, no.
I was going to say, anything else particularly from the list that Kelly just went through? There was nothing else on my radar, things that you said that felt like they needed to be further addressed, at least from my perspective? Other further thoughts, comments generally? Yes, Connor, go ahead.
I think I left 15K somewhere around City Hall here or so. Really appreciate everybody looking really closely to see where we could find that for this year. Thanks very much. And thanks, Bill, for bringing that up last time. It wouldn't have helped us too much in July.
Yes, Donna, go ahead.
Actually, you added the $14,100 for the Central Vermont Public Safety Authority twice.
So the spreadsheet, the way that it calculates, the upper portions don't actually get into the tax rate unless that they're captured in this bottom section.
Okay, so you need to repeat that one.
Yes.
Okay.
And I wanted to call it out above, just so that then there was the comparison and side-by-side. So yes.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it's a work on the sheet, but I just didn't link the formulas.
Well, when you said it was a formula problem, I thought maybe the line wasn't included above, so I know what you're saying. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, one, I'm sorry to interrupt. One thing that I think might have been confusing for folks is the difference between these two numbers. Can you, would you mind just explaining, like, why, why does it say both 6.8 and 9.7?
Sure.
Yeah.
So the 9.7 is a total bottom-line number, and so that's with all sources, that's all costs, that is the bottom line. However, if you look at it from a property tax perspective, they're two different figures. And so when you think about what will impact voters and their pocketbooks, it's really this 6.8% number, so that's based on their property taxes and what we would need to levy.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other comments about the current version of the budget? I get, Jake, go ahead.
I just wanted to add one thought, you know, looking at the other additions piece. And I know, curious where Jack's thinking is, because we were kind of of the same mind last time. And like I said, I fully support the concept of an energy coordinator. As we're seeing it as an add-on to the existing budget, it feels somewhat arbitrary to say $100,000 without kind of trying to hone in with a little more detail on what exactly that position would do, what that role would be, who the ideal candidate would be, or, and like, not even getting ahead of that, but more like, what's the, what's the benefit realized by the city to have somebody in that position? Now, conceptually, I totally get it, 100%. I mean, but trying to, like, it just feels like if we're going to approach this, then having a little more of, having given some more thought to, like, what the outcomes we want from that role to be, what those outcomes would be, and then sort of be a little more specific in terms of what that would cost the city. This would be an appropriate salary. This would be, you know, what it would cost the city to add the position and all those carrying costs. Feels like, I'm just concerned that it feels very, just sort of like, hey, this is a nice round number, let's just go with it, when at the end, we haven't even thought about what we want this person to do and what the outcome would be from that work. So maybe it should be $50,000, maybe it should be $200,000. I don't know. We just, it's just sort of like, I feel like there should be a level of consideration given to what, if we're going to add that staff position, what the outcome would be.
Do you want to address that?
Sure. So there's two separate questions there. I think one is, you know, what is the need and responsibilities of the position? And then the second one is how do we derive the budget number? And we, unless we have real hard information, otherwise, this is a pretty good proxy for a fully loaded position. You know, maybe in the $70,000 pay range with benefits and those kind of things. It could be a little low, it could be a little, you know, we might have to go a little over this, we might have to go a little under this. But this is, I think, in terms of a reasonable assumption for a full-time professional position, that's, you know, in the ballpark to get us going. And then I think there's a further determination about, you know, then what level is the position? What are the requirements? But it's going to be in that range. So maybe as we sit here next year, we'll say, hey, we saved $10,000 in the budget on that position, or, you know, well, we overspent that by $20,000. But it won't be by $100,000, and it won't be underspent by $50,000. So I think it's, like, that's, so that was the number we cranked for a position, which is essentially what we did with the economic development position as well.
Yeah. And if I were totally, if I were ballparking it, then I would totally agree with you. Absolutely, that's an appropriate amount, I guess, since we're sort of, as an add-on, having a, you know, making an argument to, hey, this is going to be the impact that it has on property taxes, having, being able to articulate that these are, justify, honestly, this is why we're adding this position. We feel like this is why, you know, it will bring value, you know? I always struggle with this, you know, like, when we throw around, like, oh, it'll pay for itself. It's like, well, how? And when does that money come back? And I just want to make sure we're justifying value around the position when we're talking about, you know, a significant tax increase, that's all. So anyway, so I don't have a problem with the number. I think it's right on, you know, based on my professional experience. But at the same time, I think it's worthwhile to give it some more thought to articulate exactly what the return would be and how it would bring value to the city.
Thoughts on that? But do you also have thoughts on that? Go ahead, Lauren.
I think that's a great idea. I'm thinking about, like, a memo that maybe I would reach out to the Energy Advisory Committee. I know Kate Stevenson's been doing a lot of work, has a lot of thoughts. And there's also examples of other communities in Vermont who have done it. So I think we could even look at kind of salary range, and there's case studies that are written up and stuff about, you know, that can give really tangible examples of what they're doing in other Vermont communities and how that kind of, you know, the types of energy efficiencies and things that are, you know, could potentially be found, where you start to see savings to the budget overall and stuff. So I think that would be great to have available, so the community could understand and wouldn't have to have followed our budget discussion from. So I'm happy to help work on that.
So I also have had this same conversation with Bill recently. And so just a couple of things that we talked about, you know, just in terms of what this person would be focused on and where savings could come from. You know, we have this roadmap for the city specifically as to how we can achieve some of these ideas. Now, to be fair, some of, so nobody necessarily in the city is a facilities coordinator or specifically dedicated to facilities. And so a lot of these projects that we are, that are laid out in the roadmap are going to take some kind of project manager, that's going to take somebody to actually lead, you know, get it together and select somebody and make sure that it happens and happens properly. So there are savings to be realized there, for sure, once we, you know, end up, I mean, it is also going to take some further investment, right? Like, okay, so, you know, we got to put in some kind of pellet system at the water treatment plant or, you know, something like that, right? treatment plant or, you know, some, something like that, right? So those are, that's some of our thought. But then that's already kind of all been laid out for us, which is very convenient. But the other side of it is even looking at that 2050 piece, right? Like, how are we engaging the community or are there policy ideas? You know, even Senator Perchlik this evening was like, you know, here's this policy idea. Could, you know, could we be moving forward with that? And so there's a potentially space for creativity and innovation and, and public relations and, and policy ideas for, for somebody who's in that role as well. So, you know, I think you can make a more direct correlation with savings as it relates to our facilities and projects that we may be taking on in the near future. And then, you know, looking beyond that, like how, how is this person actually helping a resident, right? Like that they may be helping to, you know, if, if there's ideas about weatherization, like how do we get weatherization money into the hands of homeowners? Like, are there grant opportunities, like being able to connect, you know, the residents with, with these resources? That it's, that's, you know, a potential, it's, it's, that's a little less concrete, but, you know, at least, you know, at least the range of things that we were talking about. So I don't know if that really answers your question exactly, but that's, at least, like I said, those are things we were talking about.
To be clear, my, my question was not in skeptical or in any way, just more, I just want to be able to understand and tell the story. And people ask like, hey, you know, this, this is going to have an impact on my property taxes, just to be, so that we have given some thought to what, you know, what the role would look like. That's all. It's, it wasn't, not whether there's value there. I mean, I absolutely agree that, that there is, but I just want to be able to, you know, tell the right story.
How do you, right. Do you think a memo would be helpful?
Absolutely. I mean, just to give some sense around how, you know, that this, this person would, you know, fit in to governance and, and what, you know, what their priorities would be, and then how the city could, you know, realize value and, you know, and like Lauren said with working with the Energy Committee, I think would be, I think that that would. And also I think it just, you know, it also then speaks to, you know, how we're, we're being proactive and, and, you know, working towards these goals that we've established as opposed to just being passive and, and waiting for that, for change to happen, I think. So I think it's a positive thing from both directions.
Yeah, no, I agree. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Donna.
When we had this position in before Kate Stevenson came in from the Energy Group, and she was talking about just all the projects that committee had directed and that they were no longer able to do the in-depthness and that not only would they pay back because they'd be helping us with vendors to do the jobs, but the actual jobs achieved would then affect our energy use. So I think, you know, Kate definitely can, I would presume something was written because at one point we talked about partnering the energy coordinator with the building facilitator. So we never, we may not have gotten so far as any kind of job description, but.
I actually seem to remember, sorry to interrupt.
I thought we got pretty long far, so I don't think, to me, it's, it's a real concrete idea we had.
I can provide the history and let you know sort of where, where I'm thinking about this in the conversation I had with the mayor, and, you know, this is coming from the group, it wasn't part of our budget proposal. So obviously, we want to make sure we meet the goals of the council and MEAC and what you want to accomplish about this. So I'm trying to learn as we go too. But previously, we had proposed, I had proposed a, a facilities director who would also, who part of their responsibility would be to deal with the energy issues. And at that point, we had more projects in our own buildings. We've done a lot of them since then. But it would be to coordinate our own energy saving projects, those kinds of things. They would also have been managing the parking garage, which, you know, isn't going to happen, and potentially taking over the whole parking system. We hadn't really decided that, but that was one option, you know, sort of the management of that. Definitely managing district heat. And, and we internally have, you know, there's just a lot of facilities, things with the elevator, things that need to be dealt with. And there's no, for a while, Steve Twombly was doing this. We were contracting with him for an additional day a week on top of his assessing duties to manage some of that stuff. And he gave that up, I think, a year or so ago. And so we, you know, we, we, it's, it's a capacity we just don't really have. And we were moving forward in that direction. I then changed that, probably informed the council. I didn't do it in the darkness of night. I'm not sure it was universally loved that I did it. But when we hired Donna to be the Public Works Director, rather than filling a facilities director position, because Donna didn't have the same kind of technical expertise that Tom McCardlett had going out, we backfilled another technical person. So the DPW retained the technical expertise. And the idea was that Donna, because she would not be actually out in the street managing projects, would take on some of these energy-related issues because she has that interest and expertise. And that's worked okay. No slight to Donna, just, you know, she's got her hands full. And so it probably is an idea that, that didn't play out the way I had hoped it would. So here we are. And so I, I want to be sure that if we, you fund this, that we have it be what people want, and it meets the need. And if we can combine it with some facilities work, that would be great because it's a need that we have. And I, you know, I, so, you know, I certainly, looking at the data, some of the things Kate mentioned was looking at our monthly energy use and those kinds of things. I think that's very important, and we should have someone dedicated to that. But it's not 40 hours a week either. So I think there's, you know, a lot of the things that have been mentioned can be done. Certainly managing district heat is important. So we, we could certainly use this position. I, I'm more concerned that, you know, we don't suck up too much of it and not do what those of you that are advocating for this want. So, but we have some time. You know, this wouldn't be till July 1st. We have some time to think it through and make sure we've drafted what we want and all this. So, so that's a little bit of the history, a little bit of where I'm at. I, you know, I talked to Lauren about it a little bit, I talked to Ann about it, just to make sure I was hearing correctly what their hopes and dreams are for this and obviously what the council wants. Hope that's helpful.
There's, oh, actually, before, before you go, Jack, there is one other thought I had. I know people have made this claim, right, that the position would pay for itself. I recall the first time we went through this discussion originally, Kate was very reluctant. In fact, she never actually, she never said that. And she was in fact very hesitant to make that claim, which I think was wise, because my understanding is that they can make their, you know, their salary back, but not necessarily. And even if they do, sometimes that can be short-lived, right? Like, you might realize a lot of savings right away, but does that mean that it's not a valuable position, you know, moving forward, right? So anyway, just, I, I have similar hesitations around that, that claim myself. But any, like, I do think it will save us money. Will it save their position? I don't know. Yes?
I agree with what I just heard. I think that when I was thinking, does $100,000 make sense for that job? It's more the way Bill was thinking, you know, $100,000 is about what it costs us to hire an employee, and, and we've got time to design the job and design the scope of work. I think you're right, Ann, that the first couple of years, we find the, the easy energy saving, easy cost savings. We continue to develop energy savings as time goes on, as obviously we're going to have to if we're going to make these intermediate-term and long-term goals. But I don't think that means that we can bank on saving $100,000 in energy expenditures every year. But I still support having it in the budget.
Lauren, and then I actually want to go to some folks online who've had their hands raised. Yes, go ahead.
I'm probably the guilty one who mentioned how there's examples from other communities where this position has saved more than their salary in energy savings. I totally agree with the conversation we're having. I mean, another piece of it to me is, like, I really love the idea of this person being able to work with community members. And, and so it might not be savings that the city budget would reflect, but it would be savings that people in our community could be experiencing if we're helping them access incentives for clean energy technologies and things. And I wouldn't want to limit it to be so caught up in like, you've got to make your salary back, that it might not open it up to, you know, a broader way of thinking about benefiting the community in addition to the city-specific work, which of course would be a core function of it. So just want to throw that out there.
Thank you. All right, DeeDee Brush, I see you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you very much. I, when I saw this in the reporting of last week's city council meeting, I was surprised because it seems to me that though we all feel that energy savings and efficiencies are critical, I don't know whether this is the year to be adding it to our budget. I think that some of the comments that one citizen had about the ever-increasing budget in Montpelier, which makes it ever more challenging for people to afford, is a very, very, very real reality. And I wonder how much this position is needed in this particular fiscal year. And if you all vote for it, which I hope you don't this year, I also wonder how you are going to track the savings to individual homeowners and/or business owners with this particular individual. I just feel as though there's no limit to what is suggested and what is voted for in Montpelier. And I do worry about its impact long-term on those who are living here now, those who might consider relocating here and starting businesses here. I think it's a very, very real issue, and I hope you will listen to this. Thank you.
Thank you, DeeDee. Vicky Lane, go ahead.
I, I can't, all of those additions to the budget, you're at 7% effectively. I mean, 6.8%, 0.2%, forget that, it's 7% or 10%. I, I just, I can't, I can't accept any of these additions as something that is desperately needed or something that is crucial right now to our survival during the pandemic. And the increase, the constant continual increases to the property tax, I, you know, I don't know how I'm going to do it. And, and the landlords just pass these things on to the renters, and I can't imagine, I, I mean, nobody can afford to live in this town anymore. But we, it, you have no deletions to the budget. I can look at a couple of them that are sitting in front of me because I can't scroll up on your Excel screen, but, you know, there's, there's some deletions you could make in here. And, you know, if you're going to add stuff, you need to take it away from something else. And I, an energy coordinator, $100,000 is a lot of money for somebody. I mean, you know, for somebody like me who's living on less than 30,000, who has social security as their main income, that's a tremendous amount of money, and I don't see where it's going to get us anything, really. Certainly as a homeowner, I don't see that I'm going to have anybody coming out to my house and helping me get a grant to weatherize my house. It's still going to be a drafty house. I just, you know, it's, the town of, the city of Montpelier is, is getting to be a town of the haves. And those of us that are have-nots are suffering. And I'm getting, I'm getting a little tired of people that are being paid off of our property, off of our tax money, and that includes government workers as well as anybody else, not realizing that they're being paid off of people like me's tax money. I'm paying for the, the pensions of my neighbors who worked for the state and got great pensions and stuff. And I just, I can't accept these constant, constant increases to the property tax. I didn't catch the entire discussion of what was, what the state was planning on doing or something to do with, with state pensions and it was going to be taken up on our property taxes. I, I can't agree with that. I'm tired of paying for someone who's getting very well-paid and very well-benefits. And I'm not seeing any benefits to myself. In fact, I hear a couple of my neighbors tell me how, how horrible my yard is or how horrible my house is. And I just, I do the best I can with what little I have, but I wasn't fortunate enough to work for the state of Vermont and have all of the pensions and the benefits and the whatevers that they did. I, I can't agree with, with these big, these property tax increases. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. Any further comments? Yes, go ahead.
I want to second Vicky's comments and the prior speaker. This appears to be a dance around the ads and not any real deep inspection of where can we cut. I know we hear that that happens in Washington. I don't have any evidence of that, but you, we, we clearly need a lot more than, you know, 14,000 for planning a radio system, or we can let people go ahead and do it without planning. Having been trained as a schools and hospitals' energy auditor, you're talking about three people's worth of work to take care of residential, you know, access to the big weatherization money that's coming down the pike, to manage facilities and to solicit and do the math and help people, more people get on the district heat. That's three people worth of work. So I'm not advocating for 300,000 to be added unless you go and find 500 or 700 or 2 million to cut somewhere else. I just think that this, you know, tippy-toeing across the, the ads like you're, you know, drunken sailors spending money. I'll, I'll go back to the analogy of, you know, college kids buying a new TV and beer party instead of paying the rent, you know? And you've been neglecting our sidewalks and our storm graves. We had, you know, flooding and, and nobody pays attention to this stuff. You're, you're letting our city, if you get out there and spend time on the sidewalks, you're letting our city go to hell in a handbasket while you add a lot of frivolous stuff. And I agree with the long-term goals and the long-term vision of energy efficiency and getting off of fossil fuels. And that's where the 300,000 should be, three expert people helping to, everybody bring their energy prices down and make better use of the district heat, but not by ignoring and just padding everything else that you've, that's been carried forward. Y'all haven't, in the last three meetings, you haven't scrutinized any, anything in-depth of where to take cuts out of. So the idea that you're going to keep adding things and not even add a meaningful amount to make sure our public safety communications work is a. work is, uh, it's, it's mismanagement.
All right, thank you. All right. Any further thoughts from council? Uh, Jack, go ahead.
This is really an overall observation rather than an observation of a particular item. But some people may remember that it might have been 10 years ago or so, the city did a series of workshops up on, up at National Life to talk about the future of Montpelier. And there, maybe it was at Capitol Plaza, but it was very well-attended, and a lot of people came out to talk about what they get from the city, what they value from city government, and what they would like to change, and what they'd like to do to their budget. And everybody who spoke up and had a, an opinion, their, their idea got put on the, on the flip charts on the walls. And it went from, and there were all kinds of things, ads and, and subtractions, including stuff like, we'll pay the city employees less, cut this number of city employees, and, and a whole lot of things like that. And then we've all been through these, these exercises. Everyone got dots, and they got to put on, next to the ideas, what, what they favored doing. And overwhelmingly, people were not supporting, you know, and this is a cross-section of the city, people were not stepping up and saying, yes, I support getting fewer services from our city government than we do now. I think the people of Montpelier largely value the services that, that they get from city government. And the election results reflect that. You know, these, the budgets being characterized as having a lot of fluff, or a lot of, a lot of frivolous stuff. In fact, we're putting a lot of money into, into roads, just as one example. That's the thing we get a lot of complaints about, and rightly so. And we're actually doing something about it. And, and I think it's worth recognizing. Now, we're going to have public hearings, and they're open for everyone to come and ask whatever questions they have, and to make whatever suggestions they have. And if people do have suggestions for cuts, you know, the entire budget is, is a public document for people to read, I'd welcome people bringing in those, those suggestions. But I, I don't think this is a proposal for, for a frivolous budget. You know, we, with regard to the energy coordinator, we have, we have goals for 2030 and 2050. And the only way we're going to make those goals is if we're doing work to reach those goals, starting, starting now. And if we don't have someone whose job is to do it, that's probably not going to happen. So that, those are my overall observations about where we are in this process.
I might also add, too, that arguably 2050 is too far away, right? Like, we need to be acting much faster than 2050. And so, you know, when I think about, when is the right time to put something like this in the budget? It's like, last year. But, actually, speaking of last year, our budget increase, our, our tax increase last year was what point...
0.6.
0.6%. And just for context, so everybody has it, the inflation rate has been updated to what, 6.8%? So just one, that's, you know, just some more context for folks. Um, you know, there, there is actually one other thing that I want to bring up before we potentially move on, unless folks have more things to say, which is also welcome. But I want to revisit the stipends for committees. That is, is that in, that is in here, at 30,000? I don't know if folks saw, we had an email from, I think it was Jeremy Bowdre, who was with us. And I know I saw Shayna Casper here, previously. So I don't know if folks got a chance to read that email, or consider the numbers that they proposed. But if folks had questions for either Shayna or for Jeremy, I, I think this would be a good opportunity, too. I did have a couple of thoughts about the proposal that they brought. But other, other thoughts that folks might have about the committee, paying committee members? Okay, there, so just for context, their proposal, um, which looked like it went for more than just, went beyond just the, the, what I would call the statutory committees for the city. Their, their proposal landed at like 33,000, which is a little bit more than what we had. But I think we could probably keep it at 30, anticipating that not everybody would, would take it. The only concern I had in the numbers that they proposed was that it included, and so I'm curious for your thoughts on this, Donna. It included the CVPSA, which I was like, yeah, they're, those aren't all our people. So I don't feel like we should be obligated to, I mean, like, maybe for our particular reps, but, but certainly not the whole committee. Yes, go ahead, Donna.
Actually, because I was a little lukewarm on this, this year. And so when I read their thing, and I got looked at each committee, I was even less supportive of money for it.
Yeah.
Sorry, that was my reaction.
That's okay. I mean, do you have any thoughts on what you would either add or take away? Oh, just in, in general, just period?
It, it literally made me think, this is not the year for it. Maybe we need to look more thoroughly into what are our starting points?
Yeah. Yeah, other thoughts on that? Uh, go ahead, Lauren?
Oh, I was, I was just noting that Shayna raised her hand.
Oh, I see, yes. Uh, thank you. Shayna, go ahead. Uh, we can't hear you for some reason. You look unmuted, which is very curious. Uh, we, again, you look unmuted, but we still cannot hear you. Okay, it should, we think it should work. Yeah, now you're muted.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is, we think it might, it might be on our end.
No, we should be good.
We should be good.
Maybe she could call you, Lauren. Does she have your number?
Do you want to? Are you going to call? Okay, great. Thank you. And while we're waiting for Shayna, any other thoughts on this particular piece of it? Uh, yeah, go ahead.
Um, I could actually go either way with this this year, if we're concerned about how high the budget is. Just throwing that out there.
Jack, any thoughts?
Yeah, I, I think I'm that way, too. I think the, the main value, I think, I think the dollar numbers are kind of a mess. I think, or I, I mean, to guess, the, the main value for putting something in is that it would give us a chance to start finding out what's realistic. But I think it's fine to not include it this year.
All right, can you guys hear me now?
Yes, now we can hear you.
So sorry about that. Um, yeah, hi all, my name is Shayna. I'm getting a wicked echo. I'm not sure if it's just me. I'll power through. Um, I'm Shayna Casper. I'm the chair of the Social and Economic Assistance Advisory Board on 10th Street. And I just wanted to provide a little bit more context around this hearing that you guys talked about it last, last week. So as you guys all know, the city of Montpelier just went through an 18-month-long process with Creative Discourse as consultants, where we worked on figuring out how to make our city operations more equitable and more just. And one of their primary recommendations was to provide stipends for participation in city committees and task force and things, to ensure a more diverse representation among participants. And this is, you know, really an evidence-based diversity and equity and inclusion best practice to encourage participation, and one that we practiced for participation in focus groups with Creative Discourse as well. Um, so we, and I, Jeremy Bowdre is on the line as well, who really did a lot of the numbers crunching, and I believe kind of shared some of that information with the committee earlier today. Um, but just, yeah, Montpelier has 23 active city committees with about 155 non-unique volunteer members that hold about 250 meetings a year. And these city committees, these volunteers are what helps the city run. And wanting to make sure that we can make sure people have the things that they need to be able to participate. So compensating people for their time, as well as offering assistance for, you know, childcare, and food, and transportation, or other needs for volunteers to be able to attend these meetings. This, you know, proposed, we proposed 42,000, but 30,000 would be a pilot project for providing $50 stipends for several city committees. We had proposed a few, but definitely open to more of a conversation. And this sum of $50 was just what was recommended by Creative Discourse. And there's not, based on my research, there doesn't seem to be a evidence-based number that encourages better participation. But, and we would budget for everyone in the committee to be able to apply, or to have some sort of number where everyone could ask for the funds, recognizing that those funds probably wouldn't all be used, right? So if every committee member applied for funds, we would need to be able to provide them, or have them kind of processed by which to go by to get that full amount of funds. So we were proposing that committee members would apply for this stipend. Um, and if they hit a certain threshold, I believe at $600 a year, they would then also have to fill out a 1099. And so kind of having this initial pilot project to be able to see how it goes, and to be able to get feedback and incorporate changes as needed. Um, we also want to recognize that the city of Essex is going through a very similar process, and they are starting it in January. So we want to, we didn't put in a lot of specifics here, because we wanted to learn about how it rolls out with them, and learn more best practices. They're instituting it kind of across the board, and put it as a line item in their budget, and we'll reach out to them this spring, and kind of building a more formal proposal. But however, yeah, if you're interested in digging into more about the, these different proposals, or the different amounts, Jeremy is also on the line here, and can, you know, dig in more on the numbers. But I'll, I guess I'll pause there and see if there's any, you know, general questions about this proposal, or, or other reflections. I'm sorry, I was having audio issues.
No, that's fine. Go ahead, Connor.
Hey Shayna, biggest issue I'm struggling with on this one is, how do you pick and choose which committees are worthy of this, right? It's, to me, it's just as important that somebody could like, serve on the, you know, design review, as maybe something you would come to mind, like homelessness task force, like, you know, you, you think you want people of all demographics represented, but, you know, I guess that applies to every committee. So I guess like, how do you pick and choose in a way that's equitable on this? And how did you come to some of that reasoning, and some of these different options?
Yeah, I think we were just more picking based on the, the names of the city committees, but not necessarily in a more strategic way than that. I think we would definitely be open to figuring out what would be the right committees to start with in this pilot project. And Jeremy, I thought you came off on video. Do you want to join?
Yeah, thanks. Um, I could just offer a note about the process. You know, when, when Cameron first runs the numbers for us with all committees, you know, it was a huge number, right, to make this widely available. So the idea was to develop a few scenarios that would serve as a prototype, you know, a test case, if he wanted this was an effective way to reap participation in city committees. As far as the specifics of the pilot, I think that's where we would want to influence input. But the scenarios we're doing here were just to get a little bit of a, a range of ideas on the table. Um, so with respect to like, how this can actually play out with committees, what the algorithm might be, the number of positions that have a stipend, that's completely up to kind of design. And we would want to do that with your courses.
Cool. Thank you. Other questions for either Shayna or for Jeremy? Uh, Lauren, go ahead.
I mean, just, just two thoughts. I mean, I think we also could think about setting a budget number and make it available to all committees, and make it kind of first-come-first-serv, just knowing based on the data that, I mean, and make clear this is a pilot project, and we really are looking to make it more accessible to more people to participate in these. You know, I mean, if we had the problem where we ran out because it was like, really popular, and we were getting great participation, I think we could assess as a council how that's going, and, and learn from it. It seems from a number of examples, we heard, like, often, these pots of money are set, and it's, you know, a much smaller portion is actually used. So I, even though it looks like intimidating numbers, and we have so many committees, like, I actually don't think it would necessarily be a huge problem, and just getting that data to learn from it. I mean, I do, just like, the overall, like, this is one of the few recommendations, and maybe I'm misremembering, but it seems like this is one of the few where we kind of have to put our money where our mouth is. It came out of the equity recommendations from our plan, and it concerns me a little if we're not willing to put funding in to implement that plan. Like, you know, we've done some kind of low-hanging fruit stuff, but I, I hope, you know, I would just hope we would move forward with it. I totally understand the, the budget pressures, and, you know, so, you know, maybe it's even smaller than the current number for this year as like, a short-term pilot. I do think we have to set it up in a way that we can really learn, like, is this accomplishing the goal, the goals that it's setting out, and how do we measure that? And I think the Social and Economic Justice Committee, you know, could put those details around it. And I think there has to also be a much more robust outreach plan around it, and other things that would have to accompany it, so that, you know, it's so more people are feeling welcome and encouraged, and even know the stipend is out there. But I, I would hope some form of this could move forward.
Yeah, I have a, a further question. I, I mean, I would also like to try this in some way, even if it's more limited than, you know, what we have. But what, so my question is, so just looking at the spreadsheet that you all provided to us, you know, when I look at the, the highlighted, uh, column that says, you know, for $50 per meeting per member, the total for that column, which, you know, that's the, the recommended amount is 102,000. And so, but then further down, it's, you know, it ends up at, at 33,000. So I, I guess my assumption is that you were assuming a certain percentage of people would opt into this, or, or really not, not partake of it. Because if everybody did, it would be $102,000. Is that... Is that an accurate representation? And like what percentage of people were you thinking would participate?
Which tab are you looking at in this spreadsheet, just so I can be clear?
Oh, I guess maybe I, oh, there are multiple tabs. Option C, I guess is what I was looking at. But maybe I should not be looking at that.
Yeah, so that's where the different scenarios come in.
Okay, oh, I see, oh, gosh, there's.
So this is the most complicated algorithm you can say. So in this particular calculation, I took the percentage of people in Montpelier living under fifty-thousand-dollar-a-year income and use that as my percentage. The total number of committee positions that would be eligible, you know, that would receive the stipend. That's more of a complicated kind of approach. I'd call your attention, I think, to option G.
Okay.
So in this option, we went with choosing a handful of committees and then taking the total number of members on those committees and cutting it by half as just a ballpark, which got us to that thirty-thousand mark with the fifty-dollar-per-position number. So the illustration here, you know, there are many ways we could design this pilot based on certain budget constraints. And I'm thinking it could be a successful experiment and learn more about whether this can function well or not.
Great, thank you, that is very helpful. Jay?
Just a real quick question. Kelly, I'm wondering if you're just sort of biting your tongue as hard as you can as you think about whatever, any of these scenarios and what the distribution apparatus and the systems that would be required to pay these things, and when and how it would happen, and what the impact on the, you know, city staff would be, regardless, you know, looking at these different scenarios in terms of complexity relative to simplicity.
Well, since you asked. You know, honestly, depending on, you know, which way council wants to go with this, you know, we can make that work. And so operationally, I don't think it would be a huge thing to manage per se. It definitely would, you know, take some staff time in terms of, you know, once the requests come in, you know, so that's one thing. And then if we did do a model where, you know, it's first come, first served, then we would need to be monitoring the balance of that money. So, you know, I think I probably could weigh in if I knew which way council was leaning. So I would hesitate to do that until I really knew what you wanted to do.
Yeah, I think from, just to add on to that, I think the heavy lifting would probably be upfront to define how the system's going to work, so whether somebody, when they, if it's optional, someone comes on a committee, they sort of have to say, you know, I'm going to take this or not. I would, you know, we've had some conversations, I would think it would be something we wouldn't know before someone was appointed that shouldn't be a factor whether someone gets appointed to a committee. I would think if there are certain committees that were going to have this option and others that weren't, then that would be part of the advertising, you know, this is a committee for which this is eligible, this is not. I said this last week, and I would, I can't repeat it strongly enough, I think, to get in, you know, you mentioned certain income levels, I don't think, we do not want to be into any kind of income testing, means testing for people at all. This just has to be a voluntary compliance thing. We don't have the ability nor do we want to be looking at people's incomes. I mean, if someone, you know, it's just got to be what it is. If it's offered and someone takes it, they take it. And that's just, but I think mechanically, it's just getting W fours from people and figuring out, you know, how frequent, do they get paid monthly, quarterly, whatever, you know? How do we track attendance if they miss a meeting? Those kinds of, those are administrative details, which, you know, could be bothersome, but probably the energy coordinator could do that.
You know, one other thing that occurred to me is, I mean, the way we get paid is via the ballot, right? Like there's a sort of an assumed amount, and so I know this is not really the same as what's being proposed here, but, you know, if we picked a few committees and said, you know, are they, let's ask the voters, are they, you know, should we pay the planning commission, should we pay, you know, these different committees? Anyway, that's another mechanism, which is, I mean, then you're just paying them, you're not, it's not an opt-in, so you're not necessarily getting the different, you know, people who may not otherwise apply. But you might over time if they knew that that was available. Okay, any other thoughts on this? Yeah, Connor, go ahead.
I would just sort of echo Lauren. I'd like to do something on this. You know, we pay to have a consultant come in, we hear the report, there was a very limited number of recommendations that come out of the report, and at some point, you know, is it just like writing a letter to ourselves, having a consultant report come back if we're not actually following the recommendations that they put forward? So, you know, I'd be okay in even limiting it below thirty K, but I feel like we need to do something.
Do you have a proposal?
Twenty K?
Okay, okay. So I want to acknowledge that both Vicki and Stephen, you've already spoken on this topic. And so, well, on the budget, and so, no, hey, so you're not calling up from your seat, right? Okay, that's not something you do. So I just want to acknowledge that you've already had an opportunity to say something. I mean, I'm going to allow you to say one more thing, but only if it's short, is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, Vicki, go ahead.
All right. There's, oh, my goodness, there is an echo. Anyway, so I think if you're, if you have to pay somebody to be on a committee, you're employing them basically, and I think, I found out the hard way that the Department of Labor considers fifty dollars worth of payment to anyone for anything as something you have to report to them as part of their process. And I just can't, if you're going to volunteer for a committee, you're going to volunteer for a committee. And I don't think it's fair to specifically call out certain committees. It's either all or no one. And that's hardly a fair thing to do, is to say that if you're on this committee, you get this, but if you're on that one, you don't get it. That's just, and I'm a little tired of us constantly getting a consultant to tell us what to do and paying consultants to tell us what to do. So that's basically, I mean, I just, I can't continue to support all of this stuff.
Okay, thank you, Vicki. Go ahead.
So I just remind the council that this came from the Social and Economic Justice. This is supposed to be a remedial step to more inclusivity in participation in this process. And I think that limiting it to the statutory committees is counterproductive because those are typically staffed by semi-professionals who don't need the money. But when you've got people you're asking to be on the, you know, the homelessness task force and there's various other housing, et cetera, you want inclusiveness, you want people who have kids at home, you want people who don't have money, who are willing to devote their time to it, and all you're doing is giving them a stipend compensation. You're not paying them to participate. So I think that, you know, there's a lot more deserving areas to cut from to put forty grand in the budget for this. It's a trial and error thing, and I think it'll pay off in spades in us not gentrifying this community. That's nothing anybody wants on their resume.
All right, other thoughts from council? Do you want to make any changes? Connor, go ahead.
I'd be comfortable with something like twenty K until it runs out, see how it goes the first six months. If people aren't using it, you could adjust it from twenty-five up if, you know, if there's enough money left in the till until it runs out, and apply it to all committees.
Is that?
Just throwing it out for consideration.
Is that a, yeah, thoughts on that?
I just weigh in here, it's up to you folks what you want to do. In terms of, at this point, you're really just setting a dollar amount. You do have over six months to craft your policies, again, this doesn't take effect till July one. So if you want to have more time to talk about the program, you have a lot of time to do that. So I'd suggest if you're going to appropriate a set of funds, do that and give some more, don't try to make up the program on the spot.
Shayna, is that a hand? I know you had your hand up before. Go ahead. Oh.
I was just going to say exactly what Bill just said. I think doing something is really important, and I think you're going to have to go ahead with the dollar amount, and I think we can do some learning from Essex as they roll out their program and figure out more of the details of how to do it over the next six months.
Connor, are you making, oh, Jake, sorry, go ahead.
Kelly, remember, as it stands now, it's at thirty is what we have budgeted, right?
That's correct, yep.
So, I mean, I'm fine with leaving that number in. I feel like, you know, at this point in this process, ten-thousand-dollar difference in overall scale, and, you know, using the time to figure out, you know, making it available to all committees, but then figuring out exactly the mechanism and then sort of use this as a pilot, because I agree, I mean, I think that this is a, something that's a very clear and proactive step that we can take to make engagement in the city and our committees more inclusive. So I'm fine with leaving it as is.
Other thoughts? Did you want to make a motion, Connor? If not, that's okay.
No, I'll leave it present.
Okay, okay, all right. So if, so I will just say I'm comfortable with this budget as where we've landed right now. If other folks are also comfortable, or if somebody would like to make a motion, one possibility is that, so actually, let me just back up step. One possibility is that we have a lot more to discuss, and we need the January fifth meeting as a budget workshop, similar to what we did last time with the workshop where it's just us talking through changes that we might want to make. Another possibility is that maybe we're either feeling like this is close to where we want to land, we can still make changes, but we could potentially have some kind of emotion that this is the budget to be put forward at the public hearings. Again, still subject to change, but it's kind of a question of like, do we need that January fifth meeting for a budget workshop? Because we really shouldn't change the public hearing dates because they've already been advertised as public hearings. So it's not like we can move them up, unfortunately, but that's sort of a question, I think that's where we're at right now. Yes.
Do you want like a thumbs up, thumbs down, yes, I want another one, or I don't?
Sure, we could do a straw vote of like, would you like a January fifth budget workshop? That's where I'm at. Okay. So is there a motion to put this budget forward for the public hearings?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, all right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Okay, thank you, everybody. So I think that means that we will not be meeting on January fifth, just so we're all clear about that. And we have just a couple items left, and we're so close, yes.
Before you leave the budget.
Yes.
When do we decide how we're grouping the bond issues? Do we do that on the next two public hearings?
So, well, you could do it now. So in fact, maybe some clarity around that would be helpful. My assumption, perhaps incorrect, was when you just voted to approve the budget as presented, it was, since we presented all the bonds as part of the budget, that it included all of those. But if you want to keep those up separately, that's fine, I mean, that would be good. What will happen is, if you don't want to do that, then ultimately you have to, so we have to have a public hearing on all the bonds more than thirty days before the town meeting. So normally, we actually do that, we do two of them just because we do them in conjunction with the budget hearings. So there would be a public hearing on the twelfth for all the bonds and for the budget, as well as the draft warning, and then a second public hearing on all of that on the twentieth. And then you make your final decisions of what actually goes on the ballot on January twentieth, and that is the deadline. So that's the vote that really counts, that's the one that says this is what's going to the voters. So you can have public hearings on the bonds, you can hear about them and then decide you don't want to go forward with any of them or all of them, or go forward with all of them. Those are your choices. So you can, or if you don't, you know, if you want to pull any of them now, tell us now.
I'm sorry, I didn't make my question clear. I was talking about their presentations of the bonds on the ballot, how we're grouping them, not whether, I included them in the budget mindset, but.
So again.
So if that's later, that's great.
Yeah, I mean, you have to approve the ballot on January twentieth. So ultimately, I mean, it'd be nice if we talked about it on the twelfth, but at the end of the day, it's how you choose to put them on the ballot on the twentieth.
I'm just not counting that the mayor's going to be here, so if she'd like to have input, I'm hoping her baby's going to be born by then, and so I would like her to have input on how it appears on the ballot, because we all have our quirks about how we think things should be grouped within the bonding and how a public responds to it. So I was just hoping to have a little dialogue of that before she might disappear.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. I also, number one, trust you all, and two, I. I'm happy, like, I'll be paying attention, so if I'm not also.
She made you on Zoom.
First-time baby, she says I'll be paying attention.
Yeah, that's probably fair. That's probably fair, yeah. Don't even know what I'm getting into. Oh, gosh, anyway.
Let's just say you're not. Just in case.
Just in case.
So you're not on the hook to do it.
Yeah, at least, I'll just say, the way they were grouped made sense to me. But if you decide to change it, that's okay. I'll just start there. Thought it was fine. Oh, goodness. All right, anything else on the budget? Okay, all right, so let's take up the cab vacancy, the community advisory board, the community advisory board for the CJC, the Community Justice Center. So that position had been Jennifer, Councilwoman Morton, but had to step down. And so we need somebody else to fill that role. Oh, Jack?
One observation I was going to make, I know that we discussed, or someone mentioned earlier that we might be going into executive session, but these are, both of these things we're talking about are city council internal things. I don't think we go into executive session for that.
I agree. I don't think we need to. Anybody up for that?
I would like to say it was not a personal choice, it was a conflict of interest with my new job.
And could someone say what it's, what it involves and?
You want to explain that, Cameron? Go ahead.
Hi, Cameron Niedermeyer, Assistant City Manager. So I go to the cab, so I'm pretty familiar, and so I'll speak for them. So I go to the cab, so I'm pretty familiar and so I'll speak for them because Carol's not here. So the cab is basically an advisory board to our CJC. It's required by their funding sources to have that. Basically, we help the CJC determine what sort of public initiatives and public communication needs to happen about community justice and, and restorative justice. You advise the CJC if there's any, if she has any questions about policy for her grantees or her grants, et cetera. But it's really a group that tries to make sure that the CJC has as much community impact as possible and serves as a conduit between the community and the CJC. It's a really lively group. It doesn't meet very frequently. They're upping that probably to a little bit more than quarterly, but right now it is quarterly, two hours a meeting.
And do these meetings tend to be during the workday or in the evening?
They are after night, after 5:00 o'clock.
After hours, I think.
No?
I'm willing if it meets that infrequently, even just once a month, but if anybody else wants it, take it.
I don't know enough about them to, I'm not volunteering for that, sorry.
I like, as a mediator, I, I like that association.
Yeah. Connor?
I'd like to move to appoint Donna to the, to change their minds.
Got to jump on that. Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Thank you, Donna. I, I also want to serve on that board, it's great, so.
Thank you, Donna.
I got an email today about another committee appointment, Stormwater. And it's not on this list. It's not on the list. And, well, Zach thought there were some council appointments when I was gone, the first of, of November.
It's a good call.
None of you remember volunteering?
I think I might have volunteered.
I did, no, I did.
So it's you two?
I haven't heard anything.
Okay.
And there's some other errors here, such as the Central Vermont Public Safety Authority has no one appointed and you have Doug and you have Justin.
It just hasn't been updated.
So I can send those to Cameron, those corrections?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Okay. All right, well, and so we have a council president, which is Jack, we have a vice president, who I believe is Donna, right? And, but we currently have no parliamentarian. So, Jack, you were the parliamentarian at some point.
I'm willing to do it again. I don't know if there's any conflict.
Are you aware, there's any...
You know, I looked at it, it just, the, the language in the charter is printed there. It doesn't necessarily, it says we have to have one. It doesn't really say they can't be the same person.
Well, I'll nominate Jack.
I'd like to second that.
Okay. All right.
The only, I...
Yes. Go ahead.
I don't want to hold up progress. Just, I will point out that the pres, the, the main role of the president is to run the meetings when the mayor is absent.
Right.
And in this particular case, we have reason to believe the mayor will be absent for a few meetings. So I would point out that the person ruling on decisions of the chair would be the chair. Or advising on...
Advising, yeah.
So I, I just, we should think about that.
Yeah.
It's true. I, I would just point out that under Roberts' rules, when the chair makes a procedural ruling, it's always subject to challenge.
Right.
Yeah. And we have John Odom, who's our really dependable partner.
So, and it's subject to challenge by anyone of the council? Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That's, that's how...
I have this one, this big for dummies.
What, what division is that? Oh, gosh, I don't know.
So just to be clear, the parliamentarian, their role is to help clarify what the rules are, right? So, but anyone at some point could, could say, you know, I don't think that's how the rule is and actually look it up.
And we haven't had that many parliamentary challenges. I just, we should just say that out loud.
Yep, yep, okay. Any other thoughts? I mean, the other, the other possibility too is that it's, it's not a bad thing to have somebody who is like training up in, in that area, you know what I mean? But I, you know, fair enough.
Do what you want.
We don't expect Jack to make errors.
Well, and if you do, anybody can challenge you, so there we go. Further, so I think there was a motion and a second even. Okay, so further discussion. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Okay, thank you, Jack, for your willingness there. All right, so, oh, gosh, that is the end of our business. Very exciting. Donna, are you good to start off with council reports?
I am, because I'm just going to wish everyone Happy New Year and hope that we all can have a good time and looking forward. And to best wishes to Ann and Zach, that your baby will be healthy and on time.
Thank you.
Ditto all that, I'm good.
Thanks. Okay, fair enough. Jennifer?
Good luck.
Oh, thank you.
You're, you're officially in any day now category territory, so...
This is true.
Hope for all the best.
Yeah.
Definitely ditto all that, we'll be thinking of you.
Thank you.
And we will look forward to you being unplugged in January. My, my only question is, should we be thinking about remote if there is really a huge COVID spike in January? Like, how would we make that decision and notice it? And, I mean, is there, do we, I hate, I know it's 10:38, but...
No, it's a good thing to bring it up.
It's a good question.
Put it on the next agenda and if it needs to be an emergency. We could put it on the next agenda and, well, actually, the mayor can call an emergency meeting, or so I'm going to assume that in her absence, the president can, and I know the clerk can if the mayor doesn't, there's a circumst, if that's, I think that's if citizens ask for it and the mayor refuses, then the clerk can call one.
I'm sorry, Bill, I'm just not hearing.
Sorry. So the charter says the mayor may call a special meeting at any time. I'm, without reading it, I'm assuming that means the president may in the absence of the mayor. And I think we should probably assume that the mayor will be considered to be on a leave of absence as opposed to just not being in a meeting. And then it also says if citizens, I think there's a, if people want to have a meeting and the mayor doesn't call it, then the clerk can. It's just, there's a kind of check and balance if the mayor's not...
There's something else.
Right. But I think in this case, we can tentatively put it on the 12th agenda and if we feel we need to have a special meeting, we could call one earlier.
You know, it also occurs to me that we could have, I mean, this, we'd still have to have the space open, but counselors could participate remotely regardless. Right? And so even as the counselors are remote, you could decide to continue that if, but then, you know, what, what's the threshold? What are you basing it on? It's a good question.
And I think we should, we should probably be watching the, what the legislature does because you, you know, a year or so ago, they, they changed the rules to allow for solely remote meetings. And right now, that isn't in case, so we do have to have a physical location. So the mayor's right, we could, you could all be remote right now as long as staff was here. So...
And thank you for these.
Yes. So, yeah, I guess I, I should say I anticipate being gone for a couple of meetings coming up. A couple, yeah, we'll see how many. But, you know, the fact that we don't have a meeting January 5th, that's helpful. So besides that and hopefully introducing a new human into the world, I also just announced that I'm running for mayor again, which I'm very excited about. So figured I better do that now before I change my mind. No, I, I'm, I'm actually, like, I really enjoy being mayor. I, and I'm really hopeful that I can serve the city of Opelia for another two years. And, yeah, that's, I guess that's, that's all I'll have to say about that. John?
Just mention that, yes, I can call a special meeting if I receive a petition of the majority of y'all. So, and the only other thing I would say is, I need you to correct, I misspoke earlier, we're not getting mail in elections for August and November, we're just getting it for November. So, just because I put that out there and I was wrong.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for that correction.
Thank you. I would just like to say to all of you, and actually to the city staff, you know, this has been a really hard year, 2021, 20, on top of 2020. So thank you for your service. We've, you know, there's, we get criticized and we have tough issues and they're not always readily apparent. And you've all stepped up and our staff has stepped up and I really appreciate that. So I hope everyone has a great holiday week and a half and takes the time that they need. I hope that the mayor delivers a happy, healthy baby and stays happy and healthy herself. And we look forward to meeting your new human. And we, as much as we like having you here, we hope we don't see you till Navy Town Meeting Day.
Well, I'm sure we'll be back before then. We'll see.
And, yeah, and so just happy holidays to everyone and thanks and appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, everybody. All right, so that is the end of our business. So I am going to adjourn the meeting without objection, 10:43. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.